The regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Present.
Mayor Protem Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. City Attorney, any action to report out from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayors. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the two items on the agenda. First was a conference with labor negotiators and the staff made a presentation to council and council gave direction to staff. No reportable action was taken on that item. Second item was a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation in one case. On that item, the council did, by unanimous vote of the council, decide to enter with a coalition of California cities to file an amicus brief in the United States Supreme Court in a case entitled Martin versus City of Boise, Idaho, U.S. Supreme Court Case 19-247, and this is in support of the City of Boise's petition for the Supreme Court to take their case in a case involving a Ninth Circuit decision that held that citing persons for sleeping or resting on public property is a violation of the U.S. Constitution's cruel and unusual punishment clause. Coalition of multiple California cities are signing on to this amicus brief and the City Council in closed session tonight decided to do so as well. Copies of that brief will be available to the public when it is filed. That concludes the closed session report.
Thank you. Now if you'll please rise and join me first in a moment of silence for the loss of Marlon Thank you for that. There will be a memorial walk in Unity for the community and for the loss of Marlon and others to violence this year. That will be Friday, this Friday, the 20th, at 7:00 p.m. It will begin over at Ocean and A and finish the walk here out front of City Hall at the Civic Plaza for a memorial program that the family has asked, and I invite everyone to join us in that walk and show support not only to the family but to all of the community. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now for some presentations. We presented the 20th anniversary to the Lompoc Valley Community Healthcare Organization proclamation on September 12th, 2019, and we thank LVCHO for all of the positive work and contributions they make to our community on a regular basis. I also now have two presentations. The first will be for Constitution Week for September 17th through the 23rd, so if that organization will join me at the podium to receive the proclamation. Thank you, ladies. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2019 marks the 232nd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Now therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2019, as Constitution Week in the City of Lompoc and urge our citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Fabulous. You have the mic if you'd like.
We have a Colonial Woman with us, and we have a little package here for our council members, and included in that package is a flag, copy of the Constitution, bookmark with the representation of the week in there, and a flag and a pamphlet on how to take care of the flag. So we are observing this entire week for Constitution Week. We have been busy this month in taking copies of constitutions to three high schools, elementary school. We spent last Saturday in the library with kids, and they got to use the quill and a pen, played some games, and what else? Oh, and it's interesting what people you meet. This gentleman, we kept trying to get him to come up, but he wouldn't come up to the table, so he finally came up. So we started talking, and it turns out that he had done research in ancestry.com for his wife, and he found three people who came over on the Mayflower. And I said, "Well, I'm trying to work on mine, but I'm not sure whether I'm going to find one or not." So it's really interesting. We had some that were jokesters, and we had one boy who came up and he printed, and when he printed his name, he did it like in double lines, and then he went with his brothers and sisters back into the library, and then he came back. And the best way to use the quill is with cursive and not printing because you drop ink all over. So he sat down and wrote a little note, and it was a thank you note to the library, which we presented to the library. You want to say something?
Say that. Oh, right here. The National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit, non-political volunteer women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education for children. Members are lineal descendants of those who supported the cause of independence in the Revolutionary War. Thank you, ladies, for that. And now if I could get representatives from the Independent Order of Odd Fellows to join me up at the podium, I'd be happy to read proclamations. There are two. So we have one honoring the California chapter of the Independent Order of Odd Fellows and the other honoring the Lompoc chapter. I'm going to read a portion of the proclamation for the state first, and then I will move over to the proclamation for the Lompoc chapter second, and then close out with the "now Thor for I am" as a way to reduce how much we repeat ourselves. So, the California chapter proclamation starts, "Whereas the Independent Order of Odd Fellows has been active in California since September 9th, 1849, one year before statehood with the establishment of the California Lodge Number One in San Francisco. And whereas there are around 284 active lodges in the state today operating four different care facilities, the Children's Home in Gilroy, the IOO's Senior Housing Complex and Home in Saratoga, and the Meadows Retirement Community and Skilled Nursing Facility in Napa. And whereas the Odd Fellows also support several charitable efforts such as the Heart Fund, visual research, arthritis, scholarships, educational tour for youth, and tree planting. And whereas Odd Fellows conduct a pilgrimage each year to the tomb of the Unknown Soldier in Arlington, wherein the trophy room hangs the highest jewel of merit, the Grand Declaration, of chivalry bestowed upon the Unknown Soldier by permission of the federal government. The Odd Fellows are the only non-military organization given the honor of bestowing an award upon the Unknown Soldier." For the Lompoc proclamation, "Whereas the Lompoc Odd Fellow Lodge 248, Independent Order of Odd Fellows Incorporated, was established in Lompoc, California, under the direction of the Grand Lodge of California and the Sovereign Grand Lodge of the world on July 12th, 1876. And whereas the chapter's induction ceremony was held in a vacant creamery in the 400 block of South J Street, eventually moving to a permanent location on the corner of South H Street and West Ocean Avenue in 1905. And whereas the Odd Fellows support several charitable efforts where they strive to visit the sick, relieve the distress, bury the dead, and educate the orphan. And whereas also each year Odd Fellows and Rebekas from Lompoc, along with members from lodges all over the state, decorate a float for the Rose Bowl Parade. Now therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby honor the Lompoc Chapter of the Independent Order of Odd Fellows for enhancement of our citizens' lives while providing outstanding community services to the seniors and youth of Lompoc. Thank you very much for all the work you do in our community."
Thank you.
And here's everyone, Joy Avila, our Nobel Grand, and Leroy Scolari, who is one of our senior Odd Fellows, and he was Grand Master of the Grand Lodge of California. And you heard mentioned there, our highest award we have is called the Declaration of Chivalry or the Grand Declaration of Chivalry, and I'm proud to say that Brother Leroy and I and Brother Joe Ava, Senior, all have received that jewel. And because of that, we can go to the tomb of the Unknown Soldier and place wreaths, and there we relieve the guard. Thank you. Joy?
Thank you, Mayor Osborne, and thank you, City of Lompoc, for your proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Osborne, and members of the City Council. I'm Leroy Scolari. The mayor stole my thunder as to the comments I was going to make, but I would add one thing. The history of Lompoc Lodge parallels the history of the City of Lompoc. One of the founders of the city, W.W. Broughton, was also the first Nobel Grand of Lompoc Odd Fellows Lodge, and we've been very close ever since. Thank you.
And we will round out the presentations with Randy Howard, the General Manager of the Northern California Power Agency, to provide a brief presentation to the council and the community regarding our electrical division.
So just a brief introduction. Randy is the General Manager for NCPA, which is the agency that allows us to be in electric utility. One thing I don't think is in the presentation is that we're only one of about 30 agencies in California that have an electric utility out of 450-plus cities, so we have a very unique situation where it's very beneficial to the city. So I'll hand it over to Randy and do the presentation.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for having me tonight. It was interesting, that last presentation. Lompoc was one of the founding members of NCPA. Fifty years ago, Lompoc came together with a number of cities to form NCPA, and it's Northern California Power Agency. So how many in the audience know that you own power plants around the state? Some of you, good. But we're going to, so my, and thank you for this opportunity, Ms. Mayor and council members. My objective is really just to share some of the challenges going on in the electric industry, some of the current things, and answer any questions you might have. But there are some key things going on that I thought it would be useful for you to understand in our California energy market. So NCPA, just a quick overview, there's 16 municipalities that come together to form NCPA, primarily up north of here, most of them, and that's where the majority of the power plants are located. To combine, we serve about 750,000 customers, and so NCPA, we build, own, and operate the power plants on behalf of the members. We also represent the various municipalities with legislative issues. So Lompoc benefits greatly from NCPA generation, and so you're a joint owner in five of the projects at NCPA. We meet 100% of the city's resource adequacy requirements to keep the lights on here. You have ownership in three natural gas plants, that's the CT1, CT2, and the Lodi Energy Center, and so those are natural gas plants, all located, we have an Alameda, two in Lodi, and then a third in the city of Lodi, ones on the outskirts. And then you are a joint owner in a geothermal power plant up near the geysers, and then hydroelectric up in the High Sierras, and combined, they provide a good portion of the city's generation. The last column is the renewable energy credits. One of our compliance obligations that we all have is supplying more of our power sources with renewable energy, and so there's a value for that, and the City of Lompoc receives value for that. Currently, this is your coverage ratio of your power supply, and it goes out for a number of years, but we assist the city in meeting its future resource obligations to meet its load. And so in the near term, you're doing pretty well. We're going to try to move the city into the blue area, and so there's current negotiations going on for some additional resources there, and then out into the future years to meet some of the compliance. But your staff here does a great job working with our team to look out and to forward and make sure that you're buying and you're hedging to ensure that you keep the cost as low as possible for your community. Some of the challenges going on that we're seeing is, and we're recommending some things for a number of our cities around the state, and that's, there's an increased emphasis with customer choice. More and more people are doing distributed energy, they're putting solar on their rooftop, and that's not a bad thing, it's just the typical rate structures of some of our communities are very conducive for solar on the rooftops, so we're recommending that they look at that and consider changing how you do your rates with your customers as more people put solar and other types of technologies to do their own generation. We're seeing a lot of technological changes in both the metering and how people are using the power as well. Also, one of the challenges, the legislature just finished legislative session, they came forward with a number of bills that we were able to push back on, but a lot of it was procurement mandates. They thought it was a good idea that the state take over and buy the power for everybody in the state. They thought that might be the best way to go with PG&E going bankrupt. We pushed back and said, "No, we just didn't think they did a very good job last time they tried, and it costs the ratepayers a lot of money. We think we do a much better job," and you make those decisions yourself here. But they also wanted us to buy certain types of technology, and so we've pushed back on that. We'll see, some of that will come back again next year in the legislative session. The other thing we're seeing is a lot of challenges regarding some of the climate changes, and that's the snow packs are coming later or they're shorter in duration, so how we collect our water, how we move our water in the states, becoming a big issue. Wildfires, obviously, a huge concern, I'm going to touch on a little bit more later on, but it's really impacting how we're all doing our business. And then the goal in the state and across the country and the world is decarbonize everything, and how are we going to do that? How are we going to be prepared to electrify our transportation and also electrify our buildings? There's a proposal out there to force everybody to go off natural gas for their cooking and their heating in their homes. That's a big push, and not everybody's quite ready to do it, but they're really seeking that at least new communities go all-electric, and you're seeing more of that. And so how's your utility prepared for that? And we're seeing that is a big challenge for our sector. The law, SB 350, was passed a couple of years ago, and it set some very aggressive goals to move to renewable power. So by 2030, 50% of all of your power requirements for the City of Lompoc would have to be from renewable energy. And remember, they don't allow you to count large hydroelectric as renewable. It's emission-free, but it's not renewable. That law also said 65% of your renewables have to be in contracts 10 years or longer. You cannot do short-term purchases to meet that obligation. And then, just as we were getting ready to implement it, the next year we came up with SB 100, and that passed right before Governor Brown left office, and it said, "Let's make it more aggressive." And so now the goal is 60% by 2030, and our entire electric sector carbon-free by 2045. So we've been working with your staff to figure out how we're going to do this and how we're going to do this so it's affordable for your ratepayers and we can achieve these goals. And so I'll talk a little bit more about that going forward. But these are the compliance mandates in the state of California, and there are penalties for not meeting them. This is just a little different depiction of it, but what I wanted to show is this was what the mandate was, this was the addition, but it's this one here that's kind of the more difficult one for smaller communities, and that's ensuring that you have that much of your electricity in contracts of 10 years or longer. There's a lot of risk in tying the city up for a long term in some of these contracts, and so we're trying to bring the members together and do that jointly where Lompoc can get in with the other cities and maybe get in a much bigger project and share some of those risks going forward. So some of the things that we're talking to our members about are, you know, the state of California with all of their activity seems to forget that to the customer, rates and costs do matter. And we know that's true down in Lompoc here, you haven't had a rate increase in a long time, but we need to continue to find ways to stay competitive. Your current rates are about 25% below PG&E's, and PG&E's costs continue to climb, so you've done a great job here, but it's a challenge to meet some of your low-income requirements, your lifeline requirements, while there's so many ongoing expenses to meet some of these regulatory complaints. Safety matters. We need to keep our customers safe, these wildfires, and you hear most of the stories about power lines causing the wildfires. Well, nine out of 10 fires in the state are not caused by power lines, but 10 out of 10 seem to burn down power lines. But we need to make sure that we keep our community safe, and so there is something I'll be talking about in a moment on wildfire mitigation plans the city has to adopt, and that could come with a cost in adopting those types of plans. And then outages matter. It's really strange that we spent so much effort trying to ensure that our infrastructure is strong enough to not have outages now, and we let utilities just shut it off because they're afraid it's going to start a wildfire. So it's kind of gone 180 degrees, and so I'll share a little bit about that with PG&E. You can't really see this one, this is just the most recent compilation of the big wildfires and of some of the largest wildfires in the state. I think 10 of them have occurred since 2015, and we've seen more fatalities and greater loss of property due to some of these wildfires. So some really significant challenges out there, and we as an agency have spent a lot of effort advocating for more funds to reduce the fire risk and then have the resources available to put out fires when they start. So as mentioned, a piece of legislation that was passed, SB 901, it includes 20 factors that your utility has to look at, so every utility in the state, regardless of its fire risk, has to look at these factors, come up with a plan on how they're going to address it, keep the community safe, and then bring those forward for consideration by this governing body. They will then be submitted also to a state agency, which will also review it, and one of the requirements is you have to have a third-party auditor also review your wildfire mitigation plans. So the state's getting quite serious in this, but you could see measures that your utility brings forward that will cause changes to your budget, obviously, related to the implementation of these activities. So the wildfire threat area, you kind of know where you are in this, and most of our members at NCPA are impacted. One of our communities, in their wildfire mitigation plan, their city council just approved that the utility buy a fire truck and pay for 20 firefighters in the City of Redding as part of their plan, and they are immersed in a tier-three area, very high fire risk, and they just felt like they didn't have sufficient firefighting resources to mitigate some of the wildfires, and so that was part of their plan that they're going forward with. Some of you are probably familiar, PG&E has put this out there, and they said, "Okay, under these conditions, they will shut the power off." Well, PG&E does not serve the City of Lompoc, but PG&E does serve the transmission that serves the city, and then your own distribution serves the customers within the city. So the problem is, is they're shutting off transmission lines as well in their power system shut-off or power safety, power shut-off program. We've been spending a lot of time talking to them on these issues and working with them, but there's kind of the conditions. If these conditions occur, they're saying they're going to potentially shut the power off to all of the customers, and so that's quite a challenge for communities in preparing for those. And I really appreciated your wildfire poster out here as well, because it's something we all have to take seriously, but this is a concern. We think it's going to be for about the next three to five years, this is going to be an issue, and then we will have most of the electrical infrastructure upgraded, and this potentially will not be an issue. We're also working, obviously, on legislation that would reduce some of the financial risk that also creates this issue. So one of the activities at NCPA that we're working on, and I already mentioned with the City of Lompoc, is investing in the long term. How do you make sure you have an integrated plan that kind of looks at all of these factors that are changing in the industry and that you're prepared to meet them with your electrical supply and how you're doing it, including, like I said, the electrification going on? And then we're focused on how we keep the rates stable going forward, but also looking at the environmental issues. You have a very diverse power supply through NCPA, and we have a lot of sustainability issues associated with that. And I'll try to get through this, but the reliability and resiliency of the grid, this is a factor, not as much down here. We see this more up north, we're having more challenges, again, as the technology continues to change, and we're trying to ensure that our members are looking at how they can improve the utilization of their existing electric grid. You invest a lot of money in that grid, if you can better utilize it, you're going to reduce the cost for everybody going forward. So through NCPA, joint development, joint collaboration, we think we can keep the costs lower, give you more options on what type of supply you're going to have, the services you get for that, and as we continue to see more and more cost increasing, ours is going to be, how do we find more creative ways in our collaboration to keep the lights on at the best or lowest cost for you? And with that, I could take any questions, but I appreciate the opportunity to just kind of inform you of what's going on out there. Any questions? I know you have a very long agenda ahead and a lot of people waiting to probably talk. So thank you for the opportunity again.
Thank you for providing that update and for the continual good management that assists all of the cities involved, and Lompoc appreciates it. So thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Only one item tonight, but tonight it's an honor and privilege to announce that the city, due to the hard and dedicated work of the Finance Department, has received the Government Finance Officers Association, or known as the GFOA, Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Little background, the GFOA established this award program in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports, or we call it the CAFR, that evidence the spirit of the reports, or we call it the CAFR, that evidence the spirit of the transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving this goal. The goal of the program is to ensure that users of these financial statements have the information they need to understand the financial standing of the city. Reports submitted to the award program are then reviewed by selected members of the GOFA professional staff and GFOA Special Review Committee, which is comprised of individuals with expertise in the public financial sector and includes financial statement preparers, independent auditors, academics, and other financial professionals. So this award, on top of a clean audit that is given to the city by an outside public accounting firm, confirms that the city is accounting for and reporting on all of its finances in a proper manner. And I'd like to have our Management Services Director, Dean Albro, he'd like to make another comment.
I just wanted to say thank you to our team for all the commitment and dedication. It takes a lot of work to get this award together. I also thought it'd be a good opportunity to introduce our accounting and revenue manager, our newest team member. Kristi Donnelly is joining us. She's coming from El Paso, not Texas, Colorado, the county of, and she's doing a great job, and we're really glad to have her on our team, and thank you, guys.
Thank you, and congratulations to the department and to you, Dean, for the hard work. So we really appreciate it. Thank you. Before moving on, Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah. Question for the city manager. Here recently, this last week, we saw a lot of highway patrol cars cruising around. Maybe you could fill the public what happened.
I'm going to defer to our police chief, he has more info on that.
So we had several news features on the operation that took place last Thursday. I believe every major news outlet covered it, but what happened was, we've experienced an inordinate amount of auto thefts here in the city, and year-to-date, we've had over two hundred. So we reached out, seeing this trend, we reached out to the Highway Patrol about a month and a half ago and asked them to do a selective enforcement detail where they would come into the city and do some proactive traffic enforcement. So as a result of that, we had five stolen vehicles recovered on the day that they were here. Two of them were rolling stolings where we had actual occupants in the vehicles, so they made those arrests. And in addition to that, we also had forty citations that were issued. So that's pretty much it. We had such success that we're probably going to do it again in the near future. And as I've mentioned before, we have not had a full-time traffic unit for probably two and a half years. Occasionally, we deploy our motor officers that are certified to work in overtime detail, but this operation was truly successful and made a significant dent. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so before moving on with the rest of the agenda, I have had some requests from council members regarding the length of the agenda, and before we move forward, if there would be consideration for pulling item eight for a special meeting, and if there would be support on that. So that way, the public, if you're here for that, would know ahead of time that we have moved that to another date. So do I have at least three who would like to consider having that as a special meeting? Councilmember Cordova.
I would support that.
So I have one.
I will support it also.
And Councilmember Vega is a second, and I will give it a third. So we will pull that item, and now we need to set a date in the future, because this is a hearing and requires a date. So I will turn to staff for potential proposed date.
We are going to need to select a date, Mayor, and then we're going to need to have a motion to continue the public hearing to that date.
Is there any dates that the council won't, that you all five won't be available, I guess? We can look at the next week, because we have it all ready to go. We can just publish the hearing.
Well, I do believe that there is some staff out of town at the twenty-sixth of next week, so that wouldn't be available.
I don't have that on mine. So the week of...
If it's next week, that means either the twenty-third, the twenty-fourth. Is there a special meeting on the twenty-fifth for Planning Commission? Is that... So the twenty-fifth is not available because there is a special meeting already in this space. And then the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, which is a Friday, the twenty-sixth, I believe, NCPA conference, so that pushes it to either the week of October first, or then the first, the second week of October as the next. Any particular dates in those timeframes that council is not available?
September thirtieth, first, second, third, fourth of October.
Well, the first of October is a council meeting, so... Councilmember Vega.
How about a suggestion would be the October fourth. It's a Thursday, but I'm not sure what other meetings are there.
That's a Friday, so you mean the third?
Well, October first is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the third, yeah.
Thursday, the third.
Just a suggestion, I'm not sure what other meetings are scheduled, but just to throw something out there.
It's okay, it's clear, okay. Because there's typically a different committee meeting that night, but they're not meeting. Okay. Yeah, okay. So October third, how does that work for everyone? No problems? So we need a motion, so the motion would be to continue the hearing to October third for the zoning ordinance update.
Yes.
And I need a second on that.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five-zero. So that will move to October third at six-thirty here in City Hall. Thank you. Now we'll go back to the agenda to consent calendar and open the floor for public comment. There is three minutes regarding consent calendar item issues, and there's two items on it. The items are listed and considered to be routine and enacted in one motion. Unless there is a reason for removal and a council vote to do so, these items will then move to the end if that is pulled after a second oral communication. Seeing no one rise, we will close oral comment, and Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I just had some things that could have got lined up with the minutes that seemed there was a little bit of confusion, but I think we can true it up on the third here, but just some of the items that lined up differently. I don't necessarily want the minutes driving what is approved in the zone code update. Is there...
Are you saying you want to continue that to the, to October third?
Well, there's some clarification, I think, because some of the items that I had made, one was namely about the size limitation on containers that was solely for residential. It wasn't for the other...
If you have an amendment that you want to make to the minutes, you can make that amendment right now, or we could continue it to the next meeting, and you could discuss with staff the amendments you think are necessary.
I'd appreciate if we continue to the next meeting.
So would you prefer it the October first meeting, so that it's cleared the meeting before?
Be fine.
Okay. So with that amendment request, do we have a motion to accept consent calendar with pulling the minutes till the October first meeting?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Vega, and I will second that. Any other discussions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five-zero. There are no staff presentation announcements or requests as far as I can see from the agenda, so now we will move to oral communications regarding city matters that are not on the agenda. That was part of consent calendar.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. In light of the increase in crime in Lompoc we're all concerned about, and I know that a sales tax is on the agenda tonight, but in addition to that, many of us are looking forward to hearing how the cannabis tax will help with our budget and help with staffing in our safety departments. Thank you.
Mayor Osborne, council members, my name's Diane Long. I spoke to you at the last meeting, or a couple meetings ago, on August sixth, about the impact fees that I was charged. I would just like to make a brief statement and clarify something. Mr. Johnson's presentation to you at that meeting described seven ADUs that had been approved at that point in time. He stated that three paid proportional fees as to their new payment schedule, three paid no fees, and one paid sixty percent. That would have been me. The four that paid the fees, he said, were not proportionate to the ADU single-family formula, occurred before the city manager's memo, and that left me a little bit confused. Actually, four people paid the proportionate fees, including me, not three that were described. The three who did pay the proportionate fees were approved prior to that memo. I was also approved prior to that memo, yet I had to pay ten thousand dollars in fees plus twenty-five hundred dollars to the school district mandated by the city. If you turn to page four, I want to try to illustrate that to you a little more clearly. At the top, there are the three properties that paid no fees and their approval date as per the city's eTrakit website. And then there's mine on Chestnut, my approval date, July twenty-fifth, clearly prior to the city manager's memo, which was August sixteenth. And then you have the three people who paid those proportionate fees all approved after his memo. I don't understand why people with similar projects to mine, all approved before the memo, like me, paid no fees, and I had to pay nearly twelve thousand dollars. One of those people who paid no fees was approved only twenty-seven days before me. He paid nothing, I paid twelve thousand dollars. ADUs are not currently anywhere on the AB sixteen-hundred impact fee list. It seems to me that would be a new clarification of dwelling and perhaps an amendment to the master impact fee list, and not merely an extension of the fees that are on there. Excuse me. I see there's a public hearing for you to approve those fees coming up October the first. In my understanding, should you do that, those fees would become effective thirty days from that date. And correct me if I'm wrong, that's my understanding, when you sign a resolution regarding fees, it would become effective thirty days after that. I don't know how you could justify charging me these fees a year and two months ago, and then just approving them maybe next month. I could be mistaken. If somebody could show me where in the city rules, or the charter, or any governing document that says this is the way we do fees, we do them by memo, and then a year later, we get a resolution approving those, I'd be very interested to see that. So I sent you all a package on August the ninth with some of this information in there, requesting a refund of those fees based on that information. It's not fair for four people to approve the memo.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mayor, whoops. Mayor and city council members, as it gets dark early, and I don't drive off to duck, I would like to make my presentation here. The one percent sales tax has been debated for a minimum of six months. The debate was, should we or shouldn't we raise the sales tax by one percent? Simple, isn't it? So why does it take a minimum of over six months and the loss of several jobs? And now the wording of how it should be on the ballot? Shame on the lot of you. If you were so concerned on balancing the budget and decided who and what to cut, why didn't you all step up to the plate and offer a cut in your salary? Then it wouldn't be so hard to swallow doing away with jobs, care of the parks and the libraries, and operating with less workers in our major departments. I hate to continue to harp on the police and the fire departments understaffed, old equipment, but safety should be our major concern, especially the increase of shootings and gang violence. Act like you really care for the welfare of this beautiful city and safety of us, the citizens who elected you to do the job of a council member. Get with the program and make a simple choice and stop the long delay of the one percent tax. You seem to be eloquent in talking, but it ends up you say nothing of importance in this situation. Please, please, put that on and get with it. Thank you for your time.
Seeing no one else rise, we will close oral communications and return to our agenda for item three, which is appointments. There is an open position on the Planning Commission. This is Councilmember Cordova's opening, and it is a term ending in twelve twenty-twenty. And we have an applicant in Ken Ostini. So I will yield the floor to Councilmember Cordova.
I would like to nominate Mr. Ken Ostini as my commissioner on the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five-zero. Welcome to the Planning Commission, Mr. Ostini. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Item four, consideration of adoption of election resolutions to place before city voters at March third, twenty-twenty election consolidated with the statewide primary election, a one percent general sales tax ballot measure, declaration of fiscal emergency, call of election, direction for impartial analysis, and ballot arguments for measure appropriation of funds to pay for the election, to be presented by city attorney, Mr. Jeff Malave, and city manager, Jim Truitt.
Evening, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight because at the city council's special August twenty-second meeting, council gave direction to bring back a general tax measure for the March thirtieth, twenty-twenty special election ballot, as you're all aware. We have that tonight before you in the staff report, as well as five different actions that the council needs to take tonight in order to place that tax measure on the ballot in March twenty-twenty. It is a one percent general sales tax that's been prepared. The tax, as directed by council, would be in effect for fifteen years, fifteen-year sunset clause. Tax measure does include an oversight committee that is made up of the members of the city council. And according to our state constitution, any local tax does need to be approved by the voters in the community, and because this is a general tax, it needs to be approved by fifty percent plus one of the voters. The five actions that the council needs to take tonight are four resolutions and one motion to read the title of the ordinance. The resolutions are a fiscal emergency declaration, a resolution calling the election for March third, twenty-twenty, authorizing to consolidate the election with the statewide primary election that's going to be held on that date, and authorizing the county to run our special Resolution directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the tax measure. That impartial analysis will be printed in the ballot pamphlet that voters receive for this election. That resolution also includes a process for setting arguments for the ballot that are also printed in the sample ballot pamphlet. I did forget to mention that in the resolution placing the measure on the ballot, the council needs to choose what the ballot question on the face of the ballot is going to be, and we have several options that I'll go through for you tonight. We also have a resolution making a budget allocation for the, for twenty-five thousand dollars for the city to, that's the cost, the city needs to pay the county to run the special election in March, and then we need to have the title of the ordinance read. I'm going to go through all four of those resolutions, one by one. The first one is the fiscal emergency resolution. That is required because in order to place a general tax on a special election ballot in California, an election where council members are not on the ballot, the council has to, by a unanimous five-zero vote, declare a fiscal emergency for the city and that there... has to, by a unanimous 5-0 vote, declare a fiscal emergency for the city and that there's a need to place the measure on the March 3rd, 2020 ballot. The state constitution provides that that can be done, quote, "in cases of emergency declared by a unanimous vote of the governing body." That resolution will be decided first tonight. If it does not pass by 5-0 vote, then we go no further tonight, and we can continue the item to try at a later meeting, or we just table the tax item if that resolution does not pass. Second resolution is the resolution calling the election and placing the measure on the ballot, authorizing county consolidation, and choosing the ballot question. For this resolution to pass, four yes votes on the council are needed. This resolution has an attachment, which is the actual ordinance of the sales tax, which is going to go in our municipal code if the tax is approved by the voters. Council is not approving the ordinance tonight. The council is only deciding whether to place the tax ordinance before the voters for them to decide. The council does tonight need to decide what the ballot question will look like when the voters see their ballot. And that is the question that says, shall the tax measure be adopted? And then there's a yes or a no where people vote. It is completely within the discretion of the council what that question shall look like and how it shall read, as long as it meets the six rules that are on page five of the staff report. The ballot question can be no more than 75 words. It has to use the phrase, shall the measure, and then stating the nature, be adopted. It has to include an estimate of the annual revenues generated by the tax. It has to state the tax rate, in this case, 1 percent tax per transaction. It has to state the duration of the tax or the sunset date, and in this case, that's 15 years. And importantly, the ballot question cannot be misleading. It has to be a true and impartial synopsis of the purpose of the proposed measure and has to be in language that is neither argumentative nor likely to create prejudice for or against the measure. So it has to be accurate and not misleading. We have, in the staff report, presented three different options for the council to consider for ballot questions tonight. In addition to that, last week, I provided a fourth option, which is in front of you, labeled option four. Essentially, all that option does is it lists out the title of the measure and it places it at the very beginning so that when voters look at the ballot, they will see immediately the title of the measure that they're voting on. Options four and five were other options that were developed today and also placed before you on the dais, and there are copies for the public on the table in the back. These options.
You mean five and six?
I'm sorry, did I say four and five? I did mean, yes, five and six are two other options that were developed today. These essentially, what they do is include language regarding the fact that the funds from this tax can be used to pay down the city's long-term liabilities, including PERS liability, and includes the fact that those payments would include potentially savings of $21 million in interest on the city's CalPERS payment obligations. Option five contains that language in the middle of the question. Option six contains that language at the beginning of the question. Those are the basic differences between all these options. And in my legal opinion, all of these options do comply with the six rules on page five of the staff report. It is up to the council to choose one of these tonight or to choose any other question that the council might desire, or to play with the wording of these questions if the council wishes tonight. That is part of the second resolution. Also part of the second resolution is a direction to the county registrar of voters to consolidate our local special election with the county statewide election. And you see on page six of the staff report, the costs, that it will cost the city to hold this election. It is far lower cost to hold this election consolidated with the county than it would be to hold our own special election. So the budget resolution is essentially allocating the $25,000 to hold this election. The second table on page six of the staff report is an outline of the dates, deadlines that are required by the county that we need to meet in order to put our measure on the March ballot. The most important of these dates is the very first one, which is October 24th, 2019. That is our deadline as a city to adopt this resolution, calling the election and placing it on the March 2020 ballot. The county has set that October 24th deadline because of the county's internal timing requirements. It's earlier than the state law deadline, but we have to comply both with the state's rules and the county's rules. So technically, tonight is not our deadline. We have two other regular council meetings before October 24th, but October 24th is the deadline. You'll see down in the later dates, in the November and the December dates are when arguments for and against the measure are submitted and the impartial analysis is prepared, and the ballot pamphlets are put together and mailed to voters. Actually, that occurs next year. If this tax is adopted by the voters in March 2020, it will not begin to be collected until the beginning of the next quarter, that is, at least 110 days after the election. So it'll start being collected in approximately July 2020, and first revenue will reach the city in October of 2020. That is the resolution to call the election, and that requires four votes of the council. The third resolution is calling for the city attorney to prepare the impartial analysis. That is essentially just a summary of the tax measure that gets placed in the ballot pamphlet. It is supposed to be impartial, to educate the public on what they're voting on. The second part of that resolution is more involved for the council, and that is two decisions. First decision is whether the council wants to allow rebuttal arguments to be printed in the ballot pamphlet. We have to allow arguments for and against the measure to be printed in the ballot pamphlet, and there's a process for doing that, which we'll talk about later. But then the council has the option whether it would like responses to the argument for the measure and a response to the argument against the measure to be printed in the ballot pamphlet, or whether you just want to have the arguments for and the arguments against. That's issue one for the council to decide on that third resolution. Issue two for the council to decide on that third resolution is what's going to be the process for presenting the arguments for and against the measure. You see at the bottom of page seven, there's a long paragraph, and there are three options inside that paragraph. First option is the council can, I guess the first thing you need to know is, it's state law that if a council member, or if any council member submits an argument for or against the measure, that argument gets priority over any other person of the public that submits an argument. So the council can decide, option one, if it would like to collectively craft an argument, presumably in favor of the measure, and submit that to the elections official for inclusion in the ballot pamphlet. If the council did that, then that argument would essentially be the one that's printed, as long as the argument complies with all of the rules for how you have to draft your argument, because council gets priority. Option two is the council could create a subcommittee of two council members to draft the argument for the measure, and that's the one that would get submitted to the elections official and printed in the ballot pamphlet. Option three is the council could do nothing, essentially, and let whoever wants to submit arguments to the elections official submit arguments. If that's the case, arguments submitted by individual council members still get priority, but if more than one council member submits an argument, so the city clerk is choosing between two submitted by council members, she will draw randomly to determine which one is printed. If no council members submit any arguments in favor of the measure, then it is up to the public, to, any member of the public can submit arguments in favor of their measure, and there is a process, there's a hierarchy in state law for which one the city clerk has to give priority to. What's called bona fide organizations, bona fide citizen organizations, get priority over individual citizens. So if there's a group of citizens that has bylaws and they submit their bylaws, and they submit an argument, they'll get priority over just an individual citizen. If there's more than one group that submits an argument, the city clerk will choose randomly. If no bona fide group submits an argument, and the city clerk gets five arguments in favor of the measure from five individual citizens, city clerk will choose randomly which one gets printed. And that entire process is the same with arguments against the measure. So I don't believe the council wants to submit arguments against the measure. If you did, you could do that. But generally, arguments submitted against the measure will be submitted by bona fide resident groups or individual members of the public, and the city clerk will choose according to the hierarchy in the same way. If that was confusing, I am going to be available for questions. The final, okay, so I talked about the budget allocation resolution, and then the final item that the council will need to do tonight is to make a motion to just have the title of the ordinance read. This is not a motion to approve the ordinance. There's just a provision in state law that says an ordinance shall not be adopted unless its title is read, and further reading of the ordinance is waived. So we do need to do that, so that when and if the voters approve this measure, it goes into effect. That completes my staff report. I'm available for questions. You should also take public comment on this item tonight, and that concludes my staff report.
Councilmember Starbuck.
You know, when I picked up my binder late last week and I read this, I was kind of concerned that maybe yourself and the city manager weren't at the same meeting that I was on the 26th. With the additional showing of options here, now I think we're getting down the right path. I'm just going to make some comments here before we get into individual votes here, so to speak. The title preservation is there, but I think with the perception that the public has is, this tax is only going to allow us to maintain where we currently are. But when you read all six options, we list several things that we're not able to provide right now, nor are we going to be able to provide for a few years down the road, even if the tax passes. So when we go to write these options, or to write the ballot statement, so to speak, the only one that says anything about paying down our PERS obligation, there's mention, but option six says it right at the beginning. But it doesn't state that we're going to enter into a 15-year payment program, which is important. I think we're misleading the public and people in this room by telling them that we're going to save $21 million. That's after 12, 13 years, but then all of a sudden, we have the spice on the stake here. Neighborhood police patrols, firefighting staff, gang enforcement, crime and vandalism protection, street improvements, recreational services, park upgrades, and other general city services. This money is not for that. The intent was, is as soon as the tax measure was passed, that we go to PERS, we refinance our debt, we pay our debt, 2030, we hope to be done, we have two or three years after that. I don't think we're being honest and specific with what this tax is. I was pro-specific tax, but the agreement and the discussion at the meeting was that we would go ahead and take care of our debt. And as the city grew and as the economy grew, there would be extra money at that point to go ahead and do what we're promising in this ballot measure. But we're not informing people that we need to pay our debt, and whatever's left, we are going to apply to city services. City services, as we have them now, will be maintained, preserved. So is there something we can do to be very upfront about what we intend to do with almost $5 million a year for 15 years? Because what we're doing here is, we're trying to put cherries on Sundays that don't have any cream. So you see where I'm going with this?
I see where you're going with it. Councilmember Starbuck, what I would advise the council about that is that the ballot question does have to be, it has to be legally accurate. And if we're going to be putting a general tax measure on the ballot, that money is legally available for any city purpose. So if we were to craft the ballot question such that it says that money will be used for one specific purpose and then used for other things, if there is any leftover, that potentially could cause issues with making the ballot question misleading. Because legally, the money that we get from that general tax is available for any city purpose. If it were not, then that converts it into a special tax, and it would then require a 67 percent vote to pass.
Understand, and one of the reasons that we went with the general over the specific was that it was said that we would go ahead and use this money, it didn't matter if we did a specific or a general, to pay our PERS debt so that we didn't have to continue down the path of laying off, reducing services. We want to maintain services. We mentioned nothing in here except one small little thing. So now there's no assurance that what the council majority wanted to do can happen.
If I may, Mayor and Councilmember Starbuck, at the last meeting, we did have Councilmember Mosby ask that the very next meeting after the election to come back so we could work on the refresh, restart, whatever they want to call it, from the PERS. The refresh, the restart, the 15-year amortization. So there is that in there. It's, as the city attorney is saying, to try and limit it, I think, does open it up to issues that it may not be a general tax anymore, that it would be a special tax. And my analogy I used the other day was when you had a bucket of water and you dump it in a swimming pool. Once it's in the pool, you can't get that exact bucket of water out. So what this is saying is the money's coming into the general fund, and when we go to pay it, it doesn't have to be this particular dollar that came in from the tax. It could be any of the dollars that equal that amount. So by going and doing the refresh, restart with CalPERS for the 15 years, right after the election, assuming the public passes it, that would then lock in that payment for us that would accomplish.
So what is the public's assurance that we do the refresh?
The five of you sitting up here. You would require us, which you've done already in the last motion, to have that brought forward.
Like you're saying, trust me, I'm from the government.
Trust, yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Vega.
Jeff, how do we ensure here that we're moving forward? As we call this a refresh meeting, but afterwards, how can you, we provide assurances to everyone involved that the meeting is not just called a refresh meeting? We can get together, we know when the 15 years will start, we're going to decide when it will end or sunset, so to speak, as far as a date's certain. What verbiage can we use to ensure that we're going to get together as an oversight committee once this thing goes through, or if it passes, to ensure that we're going to have that issue brought before us?
The first thing I would note is that as part of this tax measure, it says that the council can stop the tax anytime the council wants. So the 1 percent tax. So the 1% tax, if it passes in March 2020, it allow, that 1% is a maximum. In other words, there's a provision at the very end of the measure that says the council can reduce that 1% even down to zero anytime the council wishes, but it cannot increase the tax over 1%. So that's something the council can do anytime it wishes, if the council thinks things are going sideways. The other thing I would say is that the motion that Councilmember Mosby made at the last meeting is a direction to staff to bring back the refresh to the council at the meeting after the election, if the measure passes. And we are going to do that because it was a direction by council.
I think it's still a little bit open-ended. I understand that we can stop it, but what majority would it take from council to actually stop the tax measure or reboot it?
That would only take three votes.
It would take three, just a regular majority?
Yes.
So there's no other way of providing any verbiage other than we'd have to bring it up again at a meeting within a certain timeframe, which we've never laid out, that it would come back right after the tax measure is voted on and possibly passed? Is that something we can do now as a council request to say, hey, within 30 days after the tax measure passes, we get together for this? Or what do we do here?
I think that's already been done. I think Councilmember Mosby made that motion at the last.
Did he put a timeframe on that?
I think he said the meeting after the election, if the tax measure passes.
Yes, I can verify. I went back after a discussion with Councilmember Mosby.
Okay, I've never heard of us doing a meeting after the meeting and usually, you know, you even tell us and all of us say, what's the next date for our next meeting? And I get it because we don't know when the tax measure is going to pass, I guess, on the ballot because we're dating it. You know what I'm saying? So it just seems like it's not businesslike.
Well, the election, if the council puts this measure on the ballot, the election's going to be March 3, 2020. And Councilmember Mosby's motion was to bring back the refresh at the meeting after that. So that is what staff will do.
Thank you. I have one more question here. You gave us options for the arguments on the ballot, okay? Maybe you could, for some clarity here, you said we could actually have arguments for and against as one of the choices. Could you kind of explain a little bit more what that would look like on a ballot?
Yes. So when you get your sample ballot pamphlet in the mail, as we all probably know, there's a very, very long list of state ballot measures that have a question just like this, then they have a little sample of what the ballots, the real ballot's going to look like, and then there's the entire text of those state ballot measures. But then also there in your sample pamphlet is a box that has an argument for the measure and it's usually submitted by a citizens group or organization of some kind that's in support of the measure. And then you have a box that has an argument against the measure. And those are just for the public to see what are the arguments that people supporting this measure are making, what are the arguments that people who don't like this measure are making. There's a whole process in state law to determine who gets to write those arguments and submit those arguments to be printed in the ballot pamphlet. So the council tonight has the opportunity to decide whether the council wants to submit an argument in support of this tax that will appear in the ballot pamphlet or whether the council just wants to leave it up to any person to submit an argument in favor of the tax. And then there'll also be arguments against the tax. That's usually just left up to any member of the public or any organization to submit arguments against the tax.
Thank you. You know, during this process, as we go down the list and we approve or we vote on all these different things that we're voting on here, if we were to put together a subcommittee with two council members to put together an argument instead of leaving it to chance, how would that work? Okay, we'd get through tonight and if everything went through in a more positive fashion, maybe you could kind of tell me how that would work and by what date we would need to have some sort of an argument for?
Yeah, if the council wanted to create a subcommittee to prepare an argument in support of the tax, you'd vote to do that tonight. And then the subcommittee could meet on its own whenever it wants to. Subcommittee meetings don't need to be publicly noticed or anything like that, but those two members of the public, members of the council would meet anytime they want. They would draft an argument in support of the measure and they would submit it to the elections official for printing in the ballot pamphlet. And that would need to be submitted by December 2. I'm seeing on the county calendar here on page six of the staff report that the period for submitting direct arguments is between November 12 and December 2, but the city clerk has more expertise in this than I.
My experience is that we have to have a calendar that is close to that one, but the dates are earlier so that we could submit it on time to the county elections office.
Okay. So around the end of November.
So when we wrote the, when we had the cannabis tax on the measure, we elected to write a argument in support. And I crafted that and submitted it and I submitted it about five days ahead of the deadline in order for staff to review and make sure it matched any points I'd made, to make sure it matched the ballot measure and for the city attorney to review it and make sure all the language was appropriate. So we have done it in the past with the cannabis tax.
Councilmember Cordova.
So my recollection of our last meeting when we discussed this and it was approved for it to come back was that we agreed on the consecutive steps of how we will support the responsible spending of this money on behalf of our community and then conduct, you know, a heroic effort to try and curb the non-funded liability, which we know is CalPERS. And while doing that, obviously, we're impacting the future vitality of this community and we're able to put money, whatever we have left over that we're not, no longer paying upwards every year, we're able to put that back into the community. When we talk about preservation, I totally respect what Councilmember Starbuck is saying and I do completely understand what he's saying, but when we talk about preservation, it's accurate because the alternative is the continued increase in our unfunded liability and the decrease of our services. So I don't know if I'm missing something myself, but I would urge all of us council members to trust each other and say, we established the consecutive steps that we said we were going to take. And that being said, with the meeting happening afterwards, so that we are sure that we take that step to curb the unfunded liability, which is CalPERS, and then the oversight committee, we talked about all those things. So I just want to kind of bring that point across.
Councilmember Mosby.
The city manager can help you with some of the numbers, but even if we don't lock into paying out the refresh and paying off the up to $92 million pension obligation that's unfunded, we're just covering the interest on, that number will roll approaching what revenue we might receive from the tax measure.
That's correct.
It'd be almost equal. If we lock it in, we know where we are in this payment of here. It's kind of, even if we don't do it, we're going to be spending it, we're just going to be spending more unless we lock it into a payment schedule. It's like cutting up the credit card and agreeing to the payment program. Of course, we're going to still have potentially another one with, but, so it's kind of what we are going to commit. And I think, you know, I'm glad to see the other options. I think it's being very truthful what we really have to do. I mean, we really need to address the 3.8 million, I think we have right now, that's going to 5 million a year in covering the unfunded component. I mean, we have to cover that. It'd be nice if we said we were going to add with this money, but what this does do is it frees up general fund money. And I think hearing October, we're probably less than 1.2 million for the fiscal year. We're probably, what, 800, 900,000 it can free up?
Yeah, that's, I think, I'm going to look to Dean, is it about 1.2 million that this would free up? Yeah.
But coming in October, it might be a little less.
True.
First revenues getting to.
Yeah, for the first, yeah.
And that money there can go back to the preservation component and assisting with the public safety component, right, as general fund support. So I mean, we're kind of committed here, but I think that being truthful to the public of understanding this unfunded pension obligation that we have to pay. And I think option six does a really good job of expressing that. And I believe when the public understands what we're doing, we're paying off that debt and we'll free up other monies to do the other's thing. And as we progress along, there will be more and more money each year freeing up for the public safety support in the parks and everything else they have in here. So I think what Councilmember Starbuck was saying is you're looking at this, but the first year, but several years down the road, you're meeting what it's stating here. And I think the statement has to be true for the full 15 years, not just for the first. So I think you did a good job in the other options.
So I agree that we need to be upfront and truthful with the community and I agree that, yes, this is, a lot of it triggered by our pension obligations, particularly in general fund, which is what's being affected by this. In reading these, though, I really think that if we want this set up for success, especially to the public that has not participated in these discussions and may not pay attention to anything other than the ballot measure in front of them the day of the election, we have to look at option five. Option five states reduction of long-term liabilities, which includes a potential savings of $21 million in interest payments. It is truthful. It is unfunded liabilities. It may be other unfunded liabilities in the future if CalPERS has an adjustment that's to the positive for us and we can more aggressively pay down in that 15 years. But stating and using option six, if I knew nothing of what was going on and the first time I looked at this was when it was handed to me and I'm going through my ballot and deciding what I'm voting for, stating in the first few words that it is mandatory state pension obligations that I'm paying down, I'm going to miss all the other benefits that it has. It's a negative aspect, not a neutral presentation that would help this pass. And one of our obligations is if we put a tax measure on the ballot, it needs to be unbiased, it needs to be truthful, but it also needs to be set up for success, not it's set up for failure. So I am concerned that option six is truthful to the point of damaging us compared to option five, which is still very truthful without being damaging out the gate. So that's where I stand on that. I don't have a problem with putting the language in. I just think we have to be very careful and consider from the perspective of the uneducated voter at the moment that they have the ballot, because we all know they exist and I can't fault them, given our busy lives, that you might not get to it to the day you're standing in the ballot box and suddenly go, oh, my goodness. So again, the whole purpose is this, to set it up for success. Moving to a general tax, that's a good thing, sets us up for future success. Writing it, being honest and truthful, important, but writing in a way that doesn't sabotage it in the first 10 words, really, really important as well. So I think we need to think about that from that perspective.
Councilmember Vega.
Jeff, if you could, the 15-year CalPERS obligation, when we move forward and we lock in a payment schedule toward CalPERS, are we locking it in for until the debt's done or is there a way that a future council or another council motion, it sounds like they can stop this also, the future payments or the obligation to CalPERS? Or is that something that's binding in an agreement with CalPERS? Or is that something internally that we've decided to do by notifying CalPERS that we're trying to reduce the obligation by X amount of dollars? Because the way I understand it, one of the reasons we went with the 15 years because we potentially could pay off CalPERS in 12 years, but it was going to free up more money on the back end of the general fund to help with all the deficiencies that are currently happening here in Longpoke.
The component that you're talking about is the UAL. The election would be irreversible, so when we went to the 15-year, it'd be irreversible. And it's only the back debt basically, people, it's not the normal cost. So it's almost like it's static and it's frozen. It's like a mortgage. You know exactly what you have to pay and you would know exactly when and how fast you could pay it off. If you wanted aggressively go out and pay different layers, you could do that. You could lower it and pay it off quicker if you wanted to. But you know exactly how much you have, unless the market goes crazy and then it would go up and down, but you'd still be on that same fixed amount to pay off based on the actuarial report would change, but you'd still be, it's like, like I said, like a mortgage, it's a fixed amount.
And real quick too, if I may add, so once we sign it, and that's something when we come back with it is, you know, I just want to make sure, it'd be my due diligence for everybody is when you do sign it, to your question, Councilmember Vega, is it's a done deal. You don't get to do a do-over. So once you sign it, CalPERS will not let you out of that agreement, so it'll be a 15-year payment.
Gotcha. Another rebuttal here is on the option six. You know, I disagree with the mayor that option five and option six is a deal killer. I think all along we've come here through the budget process and we've spoken to the public and we've also tried to educate everyone and everyone told us, hey, well, the public does understand the budget, we know how to do it. And one of the reasons we vetted the tax measure is so we could make sure we were doing the right thing because the budget is a complicated process. None of us are financial managers, but we were counting on the financial manager, which he did and he came through with flying colors as far as explaining and vetting all the different deficiencies that would happen through the years and how long this deficiency in City Hall was going to take effect without the tax measure. We needed to hear that. And most of the public that came here and listened to the presentation from the guy that was explaining the consultant on the effect of CalPERS and the bell curve and how interest was going to affect us in a negative fashion for many, many years, it made sense, but we needed to have that clarity because we counted on the public to be paying attention. The mayor has kind of said, well, the people that haven't paid attention and it's going to be a deal killer, I'm going to go forward with the people that have been paying attention and hopefully we can educate the public moving forward so that they'll trust us to know that city services will be preserved as it's headed here. And so there's just, it's just we're moving forward together. Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
I think that we also need to take into consideration that the public has already voiced that public safety is the number one concern for everyone in this community. So to me, between five and six, if five does the job of putting it in the verbiage and it takes care of it because we understand what it is that we are agreeing to, I think that it helps our community to understand, we identified public safety as a council as our number one priority during our budget workshops. So I don't see how putting the unfunded liability as your number one item on option six is any different than putting it on number five, where we're at least addressing the public's concern first and saying, we hear you, public safety, and all those things are going to be done and we're still not lying to the public and we're still saying, and we're going to cover our unfunded liability. It's out there, it's in black and white. Anybody that pulls back the footage on all these meetings that we've had for the past six months is going to be able to see that.
Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I disagree with the mayor's statement. I think it's most important, first of all, to be truthful and then hopefully your success comes along with, and I do believe the public has been paying attention. And I do believe that after this is passed, if the public sees that with this tax money we're paying off a pension obligation and we're not able to directly with that money, granted it goes in one big pool, but they see you're not directly hiring a whole new public safety force, they're going to ask what happened and they're not going to be content. So you need to be truthful and explain to them and with this, you will free up other general fund revenues that can go back to take care of it, approximately 1.2 million. So I think it's important that they understand and to be truthful first.
If there are no further questions for staff, I would like the attorney to clarify that if we went through each item, we would need to have the discussion, allow public comment on that item, then take the motion and the vote as we work through it, given this is very lengthy. It might be valuable to do that rather than try and.
That's within the discretion of the mayor. If you'd like to run the meeting that way, that'd be fine. Or you could do one public comment period, that'd be fine too.
Okay. So I would prefer to go that method, given two of these items are very complicated, the others are pretty straightforward. I don't know that we'll have many discussions on the latter end, but I would like to move forward in that method. So first off, we need to deal with adopting the declaration of a fiscal emergency pursuant to Article 8(c), Section 2(b) of the California Constitution, allowing the unanimous vote for a fiscal emergency. So we will open public comment on this. If you want to tell us, yes, we should do it, no, we shouldn't do it, if you. If you want to tell us, yes, we should do it, no, we shouldn't do it, if you want us to move ahead and take that vote, no one rises, I completely respect that, but public comment on the first of our topics is open, which is taking the 5-0 vote on a fiscal And if you're going to speak, please come forward as quickly as possible.
My name is Judy McKinnon. I've been here many times before on this same issue. At the last meeting, when you dealt with this, you pretty much said five to one, yes, we need to do this. Nike says, just do it, and so do I.
Thank you.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Gary Halsey. I say, yes, let's take that vote, because if not, we're not going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we've all decided we want to be successful at this. So I want to share with you my concern on one side, so that we're telling the public the entire story. Now, we realize that this bond measure, or this tax measure, is going to repay the costs that the General Fund owes, but it's not going to repay the costs that the utilities owe, and they're about 50%. So I'm giving you this evening a document that Mr. Wilkie was nice enough to prepare for a utility commission meeting yesterday evening. And I'm going to summarize it a little bit, but I gave it to you so that you can look at it. He studied 10 years and 30 years, because that's some work he had done before, so 15 is not on there, and I think that's going to be very important for ratepayers to understand. The document doesn't really describe the assumptions that were used for the revenue side, and I think that would be important for the public to know. And so, you know, I'm not the greatest calculator in the world, but I looked at the four utilities, and clearly wastewater and water in pretty good shape, looking at the chart in the middle that I put a little red line under. There is absolutely no question in my mind that we're going to have something in the vicinity of a 15% rate increase in solid waste at some point in this process. And I think we need to be straightforward with the public about that. But that's good, because of all of the charges we have, solid waste is one of our least expensive for the community. So if you're going to pay 15% more, it's a lot better to pay it on that than it is on your electric bill. I have a little concern about the numbers on the electric, because it, that number doesn't say that it's, basically, it's describing the cash, not the cash, less the items we need for reserve, which is about $11.7 million. So I think that needs to be corrected, and everybody needs to be sure that we understand what that's for. You need to clearly understand what the impact is going to be on utilities. You need to be exceptionally honest with the public about what we're here for and what we're going to accomplish. And, you know, in this community, we voted for two very large bond measures that we're all still paying on. And we did that because we, as a community, felt it was valuable for our community to have a pool and a hospital. Well, it's pretty valuable to have a city government that's not struggling to operate going forward. And we need to stress that. We need to tell the truth. We need to make it be simple and concise. We need to make sure there are no utility surprises later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It is a fiscal emergency, and I just ask that all five of you vote accordingly. And if there are any kind of rate increases in utilities, you all will have the opportunity to pass it or not. So I think that's maybe a bridge we should come to a little bit later. Let's get Lompoc fixed first.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment on this item. And Councilmember Vega?
I'd like to make the motion declaring a fiscal emergency and just move right along.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that?
A second.
Councilmember Cordova seconds that. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Because this is a very important item, I do just want to be clear that the motion is to adopt Resolution 627919. Is that correct, Councilmember Vega?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you. Motion, second. Any other discussion or clarification? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. The next item is adopting the Resolution 628019. The most important of this, obviously, is the language for the ballot measure, but I will look to our city attorney to provide any additional guidance, other than that seems to be the biggest portion of this second item that we need to clarify.
Essentially, that is the real decision the council needs to make on this resolution. The rest of the resolution is just choosing the March 3 date, approving the actual language of the tax ordinance. But yes, the ballot question is the most important question here.
And this, to be successful, requires at least four of us unanimously support it?
Four votes out of the five on the council, yes.
Right. Okay. So we now have our clarity for instruction. And before I open it for discussion, I would think that public comment would be important, given several of us have already mentioned the language we prefer. So if you have a question for staff, Councilmember Vega, that would be...
No, go ahead and do it.
Okay. So I will go ahead and open the floor for public comment on this item. This is regarding what the ballot language will say. So if you would like to provide input, the public comment is open for the ballot measure language.
Judy McKinnon again. Now that you have agreed to put this on the ballot, you have to think about whether it's going to pass, because all of this dithering about when we're going to meet after the ballot is for nothing if it doesn't pass. I agree with the point that Mayor Osborne made. I had already planned to say that anyway. Some of this is going to be selling it to a public that may not know a thing about this ballot measure until they see it for the first time on their ballot. It would be very surprising to me that you make the assumption that because people have been coming to the meetings and we're informed about it, that means the rest of the electorate is equally informed. They aren't. If you say to the general public, looking for this for the first time, oh, this is so we can pay off a debt to the state, guess what's going to happen? All of these options say very truthfully that that retirement of that debt is an important part of it. But if people think that that's all you're asking them to do, they're not likely to pass it, because for them, they don't care. They need to understand that the city services that they hope to enjoy, to continue to enjoy and might possibly down the road also enjoy a restoration of some we have lost, that's what's going to make them decide to vote yea or nay to this ballot measure. I strongly advise you to go for Option Five.
Hello, my name is Teresa Doughtney. I would like to thank Councilmember Cordova and Mayor Osborne for your support of the 1% sales tax. I'm not clear where the 15-year sunset came from. We discussed CalPERS liabilities, and we discussed shortfalls and budgets. I don't remember the two being combined. We talked about a sales tax, no sunset. This measure seems to combine the two. I'm not clear where the 15-year sunset came from. Councilmembers, Mr. Moby, Starbuck, and Vega, I would like to know why you feel it is so important to keep Lompoc as the lowest quality of life in Santa Barbara County. I don't understand that. You cut our public safety officers because there was not enough money to fund all the positions. The citizens are asking you for a chance to vote for 1% sales tax to help with our budget shortfall, not just the CalPERS. It's the entire budget shortfall. Our city employees are stating they are not being paid enough, and your response is to cut positions, so everyone has to work harder. Crime in our city is on an increase, and you cut police and firefighters. Santa Barbara and Santa Maria have initiated city sales taxes to improve their city's finances. We pay their taxes when we shop there. Nobody's complained, and I believe their increases were more than 1%. Why is it so important to keep the quality of life in Lompoc so low? Why is it okay to have crime increase? Why do we have to have Highway Patrol come help our police department, because they cannot do traffic patrols? I don't get it. The citizens are asking you to allow us to vote on a 1% sales tax. That way, everyone who uses our city's resources helps to pay for the services we provide to them, not just the citizens or just the homeowners. I would like to remind citizens of District Four, you will have an opportunity to vote Mr. Mosby out of office in November of 2020. Please use your vote to let your council, to let this council know, you want a council member who responds to the citizens of the city, not do whatever they want to do. You want a city council member who represents you, the citizen. You want a city council member who works to improve the quality of life in this city, not continues to lower it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lorraine Waldau, and I mentioned this before at a previous meeting, but I am concerned about the language and the education of the voters. I have been involved in a voter education project with Santa Maria and also here in Lompoc about the fact that we are having district elections, and there will be an election in District One and District Four in 2020. And the more we go out and we, last month, we visited over 200 homes, and people do not know that there are going to be district elections. A lot of people are still fighting against district elections, and so we can't make that assumption. And I think the question I asked was, what does the city council plan to do in terms of an education project on this tax measure and district elections? And so I really encourage you to make sure that the language is legal, impartial, but also something that the voters can understand, benefits them. When you see paying down something from the state, that's not a very positive foot forward. And the other thing is that we really, well, I'm 72, and I just had one of those senior moments. But anyway, I'm very, very encouraged that we're moving forward, but I think voter education cannot be assumed, and this has nothing to do with who's running or who's going to run or anything. It's strictly a voter education project, and we're, that's what we're finding. And the public is very appreciative to know that this is coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Osborne, councilmembers, city of Lompoc, my name is Darrell Tullis. And back in 2008, I managed the half-cent sales tax campaign for increasing public It was a good bill. It needed to be passed, and I believe it would have been passed, except for the fact that there was some language that was changed in it prior to the public being able to vote on it. At that time, a gentleman by the name of Ron Fink educated me on that program, and he thought it was great. But then things changed, and we wound up having an actual debate about it. And he, after being behind it, said that the way that this was worded, he couldn't support it anymore. And so he came out against it, and it failed. What I'm hearing tonight, because of all of the discussion that you guys are having, and the language that you're using even talking about it, when I go to a salesman, I don't care whether it's a vehicle or a refrigerator or anything, and that salesman says, well, let me be honest with you. Let me be truthful. Let me, let me, you know, when I hear that kind of language, I walk out, because I expect you to be honest. I expect you to be truthful. I expect you to be transparent. Otherwise, I don't vote for you to be up there to represent me. And so, please, when you're talking to each other about these measures, stop talking to each other like you don't expect each other to be truthful. How are we going to vote for something and trust the language in it, which is confusing, when our public officials, elected officials, are talking to each other like you don't trust each other? This, where it says to maintain public service, including neighborhood police patrol, firefighter staffing, blah, 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 to maintain means you're going to leave it right where it is. So that needs to be clarified. Are you talking about being able to bring it up and maintain it at a certain level? Or are you going to maintain it here? Because if you're going to maintain it here for the next 15 years, that doesn't work. It's terrible. And since it was brought up, having the Highway Patrol come through our streets to help us with automobiles and things like that? When I was here about, you know, filling the mayor's seat on city council, and I, that night, I couldn't talk because my vehicle had been stolen. That was in January. I found my own vehicle a month and a half ago, sitting next to a church. It's been sitting there for seven months.
My name is John Schluter. I want to thank you and commend you all for, last time, for all of you showing unity in voting 5-0 to take this to the next step. I'm public, and I go around and talk to a lot of people. And what I've found for sure is, if you put this $21 million in the front of this thing, people are going to shut down. Public concern is public safety. I see crime happen every night. I have brought the information to the police with photographs and willing to testify, and I can't get any response. I can't get them to do anything. I've seen them with weapons. I've seen them commit crimes on a nightly basis, and I get nothing. So when I go and talk to people, and if their first concern is, what is your concern? I want to be safe in Lompoc. We cannot grow in Lompoc if you're not safe on the city. We had a young man that was part of this program. He was a dysfunctional youth that went to a school, graduated, and went into the service. He comes home on leaving at 1:30 at night, walking down one of our main streets and intersection, gets killed. There's something wrong. Something has to be done. If the police can't do it, I call on a regular basis. I've seen people on the roofs breaking apartments. The police go by, drive through, wave at people, shine the light, and they don't stop or do anything. I had 10 people outside talking about crimes the other night. I call, I can't even get them to come. But there's probably a good reason. If they only send one officer, and there's 10 of them, they're probably better armed than the officer. So we need to do something to change this. If, like the gentleman said, if we can't improve the situation and get more law and do that, nothing is going to get any better. If we have to get the Highway Patrol to kill four of 200 vehicles, that's not a very good percentage. That really sucks. If you try to get a business and do that percentage, you're going out of business. People out there are getting upset. I'm one of them. I wouldn't be here if I wasn't upset. I'm afraid. I've been threatened by these youths. I have been told they were going to kill me. I'm still around, and I'm not going anywhere, because this has to be dealt with. And if we have to go outside, then we have to go outside. But I do know you guys make the decision right now. Now, the money isn't going to help the police, the fire first, and get our services up so people can be safe. The death... The debt's not going to make any difference anyway because Lompoc is going to burn because no one's going to want to live here. They're going to live in Santa Maria and Santa Barbara and commute to jobs. And that's not what this place should be. It's a beautiful town. Let's give it a chance to get the beauty back because I really believe it's up to you guys to make these calls. And I hope that, you know, this reaches someone because I know people out there right now are really frustrated. Thank you for your time.
Holly Waldau from resident. Councilman Vega, I found it interesting that you said, let's trust the citizens. They've been watching us and learning all this and so forth. They know what we weren't trying to do. But you yourself seem to be vaguely, or not even much very aware of the rebuttals or arguments for and against. You had to have the lawyer for your town explain it on the pamphlet. So if you were very barely aware of that, the citizens who get a paper twice a week and if it doesn't show up there, how are they going to be aware themselves? Some of the people, they get the stuff from the mail and they don't pay attention to it. Like my wife said about the district elections, we went all through District Four, out of Old Town. The vast majority of the people that we asked, do you know what district you live in? They didn't know. Do you know that your district's going to be up for election if you live in District Four or One? Some of them don't even remember that they voted for Two and Three last November for Starbucks in Vega yourself. They barely remembered that. So like I say, the voters will know. Well, they really don't overall. So they're trusting you guys to help them out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and Councilman. I for one personally believe in truth. I believe in being honest. And it was encouraging, you know, sitting back here, I walked in late, just to hear that that's what you want to do with the public and I think that's wonderful. But I was going, I was going knocking on some doors today. We do that at our church, trying to let people know. And one of the first doors I knocked on was somebody who came out and just expressing their concern about, you know, the city and the crime and what's going on. To get straight to the point, I believe, I believe we should go forward with option five and with one small improvement, rather than saying to maintain public services, but say to improve public services. Because as the man stated and as the person I was talking to this evening, just knocking at their door, trying to, and having a conversation, they are not content with how things are right now. So just to say that we're simply going to maintain it, I don't think people are going to be happy with that. But if we say that we're going to improve it, they will be happy with that. As a matter of fact, and the other thing I'll say is this, you know, what is the biggest thing on people's hearts right now is their safety, you know, what's going on in town. And I think if we make that the focal point, you know, of this, I think it's going to pass. And option five not only mentions that it's going to help with these issues, the public safety and whatnot, but it also mentions the liability. And if should they have more questions, they can approach and find out that information because I'm sure you want to make that, you would want to help them with that. So I believe with going option number five, it is honest. It does mention both of those things, but the first thing they see is what is on their hearts and people will follow what's on their hearts. Thank you so much.
Mayor and City Council, Gary Halsey, resident. I'm questioning the fact is if 1% is enough for what we need? If we have the CalPERS issue that we have to pay to save the city, 21 million, is that going to be enough to do the other things that we need to do with police enforcement? Because we are very understaffed. Thank you.
Steve Bridge, citizen, mayor, council members. I think the whole thing is pretty disingenuous. We all know that almost the entire tax is going to be sucked up by CalPERS. You have citizen after citizen, the guys who are here and know that have been in all the meetings are acting like this is going to somehow solve the police and fire department if there's a problem. It's not. So everybody's going to be disappointed one year after this is in and they don't see all of a sudden 10 new police and 10 new fire. And we all know it's not going to happen. So the gentleman who came a moment ago is right. If you're going to be honest and say you're going to do all these things, then your tax is too small. And every one of you guys are being disingenuous because you've all sat in these meetings and you know it's CalPERS and you know that's where all the money's going. So to stand up here and act like these guys are being somehow faithful to getting more police, they're telling you, we're going to be in trouble if we don't pay CalPERS. And they've come up with a plan to save $21 million in that process, but it's not going to get you any more police and it's not going to get you any more fire guys. We have to pay our debts. And if you put this out as it is, every citizen's going to come away thinking you're on a path to solve all the crime problems we have. And every one of you knows in your heart that the only reason you're arguing about this is so you can get it passed somehow. Well, if we tell them the refrigerator will keep their stuff cold, maybe they'll buy it, whether it keeps it cold or not. So I don't mean to be so passionate. I know you guys have got a big problem. I'm more disappointed in the audience that is up here lambasting you guys for trying to solve a problem you didn't create that exists, that's driving our citizen, our city into the ground and pretending somehow that if they, if they word this a little better, it'll pass and the problem will go away because it won't. The CalPERS for the next five to 10 years is going to suck up every cent of this. And you all know that. So let's not act like these guys are going to create a miracle because they're not. I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. I think the only thing I would contrast with that is that I trust the audience here. I think that the, especially the ones that have made it here, they've been coming to many meetings, making themselves very clear about what they believe. So I think that the people that are, can make time to come to council meetings will definitely understand the nuance and the minutia of some of these details. But I think it's important to think about the entire community, including the business community. And at the chamber, Chair of the Board there, we were looking out for their interests too. And it's from, I don't want to make it too glossy. I'll just say it like this. People don't, unless you feel like there is a lie, just an absolute lie in number five, then I need you to really seriously consider option five. The reason five versus some of the others is PR and marketing. If you can agree that it's truthful, it just doesn't necessarily sound the way that you think it should. Our members want a sales tax passed. It saddens me to hear that we had an effort in '08 that didn't work. We had the sales tax issue brought up three or four years ago and that didn't work. And now we're sitting here learning for 15 years, we can't improve public safety and do anything because we didn't make the hard choices sooner. This hard choice has to be made. The chamber is fully in support of the general sales tax, but we also want to commend all of you for putting your heads together, for agreeing to disagree on certain things and coming to some sort of solidarity about this. Moving forward in a positive way, if there's anything that we can do at the chamber to help either give feedback or to help with language or to anything that we can do that helps to get this across the finish line, we need to do that. Our citizens need to see a little bit of hope, a little bit of success. Our business community needs to see a little bit of hope and a little bit of success. So let's get this passed. Let's do it in the kindest way possible and let's move on to hashing out what we can do for the next 15 years to make our situation a little bit better. But if we are not continually focused on public safety, public safety, public safety, public safety, that's young people, that's old people, that's business people, that's people of every color, public safety matters. So let's keep the focus on that and I hope that you will include that in the language and go with number five. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman. Mayor, I'm Robert Schmidke, resident. Number five, it's really kind of nice. Maintain public safety, including neighborhood, police, firefighter, staffing, gang enforcement, crime and vandalism prevention, laudable goals, really laudable goals. There's one argument you haven't considered that will hit. I won't bring it, but it will hit. That's the one where they say, well, it's a regressive tax and the poor people can't pay that tax. That's coming. It will. I don't know whether you, I know you're busy doing this, but I don't know if you've been watching TV lately, but I gather the world's going to end in 10 years anyway, according to the National Democratic Party running for office. At least that's what they're yelling about, you know? They haven't given us any great opportunity to show alternatives and like that. Then we've got the ninth district, the courts. I'm waiting for the tents to be pitched on the sidewalks of Lompoc like in LA and San Francisco. That's coming next because it's their right, I am told. Do you think this will cover that? I don't know. I really don't know. The two main drugs in this city are heroin and speed. I don't want to buy that. Everybody else would have bought that. It's in the alley behind some of the buildings here. It's an unfortunate situation. It's a big dilemma. I'm not overly optimistic about it, as you may be gathering. A 35-man police force with not 35 men on duty at that, at one time, ain't going to get it. The politics of the nation may not get it as we have to re-insulate our houses and go all electric. I'm a retired electrical contractor. I wonder what they're going to do when they try to heat the houses. Now, I had to do that in Redondo Beach and I went for zone heating in one I owned and it worked out pretty well, but you had to keep the doors closed. But I could run a fireplace. With the new true believers, that's going to be out. We can't burn wood in a fireplace anymore. We're going to end the world in nine years if we do that. So I don't know what you're going to do. I really don't. It's past my power. But option five seems the best way to go, even though it may not pass. Nothing may pass. Thank you for your attention.
I'm Nancy Thompson and this is the first time I've ever been up here. And I'm an ordinary citizen and I just have a question in regard to this whole process. Okay, if we tax, or tax 1%, and that 1% goes all to furs or pers or the retirement group. So we now have, we no longer have that debt out of the regular funds that we have, correct? So then we have some extra money to apply to the fire department or to parks or to the police or whatever. How much are we going to have that we can use to either upgrade or add one person? Because that's the kind of things I look at. Now, I don't know what somebody else would look like. I was a math major. So I'm, that's the way I'm looking at it, okay? If we're only going to have $10 left, what good's $10? If we're going to have $100,000, well then maybe we can hire two, two people. So this is just where I'm coming from and I'm assuming, well, I better not assume what my kids would say or do, but I know that they would look at the financial part of it too. Thank you.
Hi again, Diane Long. I really appreciate the challenge you have in front of you. I don't envy your positions. It's really going to be tough to do this. I just think when I first read these statements coming in, and I paid attention, I listened and watched your August 22nd meeting because unfortunately I couldn't be here, but when I read this, if I was a novice out on the street, I would say, great, we're getting a new gang unit. We're going to have walking patrols in the neighborhoods. We're going to have more fire people. Everything's going to be wonderful. That's really not what's going to happen. So I know we have to do something here. I see that's a problem that you all didn't create, even though you're getting assaulted every night at the meetings. You didn't create this, you're just trying to fix it. But something has to be done to be honest and truthful and it is going to the pensions. Now granted, it's going to free up a million or a million two or whatever it was. And I don't know if this, this thing you're going to do with pers when you, after the meeting, when you guarantee it for 15 years, but in the meeting I heard is that eventually that's going to eat into the general fund again. And then three years from that tax, you're going to be sitting here saying, well, now it's eaten back into the general fund, so now we need to reduce by three more officers, we need to get rid of another fire person. So I don't know if that's the case or not with this new free plan. I don't remember what it's called, whatever you're going to do at the end of March. But I just want you to know, just be cautious and if you want to know what the public thinks, just look at some of these Facebook accounts with everybody that has kids at home or their family at home and they can't get to these meetings, but there's stuff going on in their neighborhoods all day long and they're writing all day long about what's going on in their neighborhoods. And they would see this and think, oh, finally, it's going to be fixed. And it's really not. So I just think we need to be very careful going forward about how we do this and it is going to pensions and if it is going to eat into the police department three years from now, we better plan for that now. Because it's, it's not nice out there sometimes. And I know they try, they do their darndest. I've been listening to the scanner for 20 years. I listen to what they do and appreciate that very much. So I just wanted to say I appreciate the challenge in front of you. I appreciate your varying opinions, whether people like them or not. I think to have debate is a good thing in this society. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Dorian Babings, citizen of Lompoc. I like option five as well, but I like Kenny's idea about improvements. I think that we have to do this ballot. We have nothing else we can do. We have to bring in revenues to our city somehow, just like you would in your own house. If you have a bunch of bills, you got to figure out, do I got to work a second job? Do my husband and I both have to work? You have to bring in some kind of revenue. So the city has to start somewhere and this is it, which is why all the other cities are doing it as well. So if they're doing it, there's a reason why they're doing it. If you're shopping in Santa Maria, you're shopping in Santa Barbara, you're paying that tax and you're helping those employees and you're helping that city get more people there, which is why City of Santa Maria has hired so many people already. We have to do something. Unfortunately, this is what it is. I think if our community pulls together and the different groups get together and we pull, we can do this. But it is, it is about the wording. I think number five addresses everything that we need to address, but we have to start somewhere and we definitely need to get our police up there and our fire, our safety is important. All the city employees, you need them. Our children are on those parks full of holes. And if you go out to Riverbend, which we have a lot of kids out there that we service and our boards are the ones that are trying to maintain these parks the best that we can as a community, we come out there and we try to pull together and fix those fields the best that we can. I know together, we can do this because we have no choice. So I just hope that we can all unify together and get everybody together in our community. I know when we put our minds to it, we can do a lot of things. And something tragic happens in this, in this community, we pull together and we make things happen. We're a small town, but we can do a lot of things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment on this item. To the public's concern, you're absolutely right. That's one of the reasons it says preservation and to maintain. We are very aware that 1% literally is not enough, but what can our community bear? To the gentleman that said it's a regressive tax, you're absolutely right. To the gentleman that said, it's a regressive tax, you're absolutely right. But this is a regressive tax that those that can't pay as much and aren't going to do the shopping are actually going to benefit the most from us having the additional, very little revenue to maintain those services, and when possible, improve them. Because it is impacting our community across the board of public safety issues, park issues, street issues. And as staff has said, right now, it frees up maybe 1.2. In the future, maybe it frees up a little better. Maybe if things improve, our sales tax grows, and we get a little bit more in. And at that point, we can focus on improving a park, or improving an entire neighborhood of all the streets paved. So, you're absolutely right. This discussion has been very hard. Would I love a 2% sales tax with no sunset? Absolutely. Imagine what we could do in this community if we invested 2% of our own money into ourselves. But realizing how hard it has been to just have the 1% sales tax discussion, and how hard it's going to be to educate the community that hasn't participated in these discussions, it's really important to use the words preservation, maintain, and then educate the populace about, it is that. Like, our goal is to get back to the additional 10 officers that the positions are open for. It is really important that maybe we take some of this excess and focus on a particular project, and do it really, really well. But that, again, is on us to invite you to that discussion upon the passage of this, to say, we're going to reset and pay aggressively the CalPERS debt, so that money, that $5 million, isn't eating into the general fund. Because if we don't have this tax, and we don't pass it, that $5 million's going to eat into public safety even more. And you're going to have even fewer staff to respond to those concerns. So, we're trying to be as transparent as possible. We're trying to be as straightforward as possible. But at the same time, as Mr. Ball said, this, this is a PR. This has to be able to be read and perceived as to exactly what it's going to do, which is why it doesn't say to improve. I would love to for it to say to improve. But we just need to be able to maintain right now, and we're not even doing that. And with $5 million a year coming at us, we're definitely not going to be able to do it. So, I really appreciate everyone coming out consistently, often, and every time. This has been huge in the discussion. Giving your feedback on what you think needs to happen, how honest we need to be in our education. Because to those that said it, yes, once we pass this, all we're allowed to do is educate. We cannot advocate. So, it really will be you, those that have been part of this conversation, getting out there and saying, this is what it's going to take for us to at least maintain the community at what we know it needs, and strive to improve. So, I would like to make a motion to take option five as our measure. That's my motion. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah. So, getting back to answer some of the questions the public asked. We did dig deep this year. We did increase, from year to year for the police, $1.3 million. Those who weren't listening, we've been saying that over and over again. We dug deep. We cut other components back. The, how many, how many police officers you think would stay here if the pension fund disappeared? And how fair would it be to all those people who retired, and that money disappeared? So, we're actively going out, where some of the communities, Santa Maria, isn't addressing their pension. I don't think Santa Barbara is yet either. Santa Maria is growing 3% to 4% annually, and they need that. Lompoc, we're just finally getting back to the numbers we were. But being fiscally responsible, and we're not going to get a brass plaque. We pay off the pension obligation. You get a swimming pool, you get a brass plaque with your name on it. But this is a hard thing to do, to make sure that we do this. We could have kept, like Councilmember Holmball said, kicking the can down the road, and not addressing this. But who'd want to come to a community that it's not addressing the pension? Who'd want to come here and work here? Now, I have said before that we free up that 1.2. The three positions in police that we had held, it'd be my motion to make sure those positions are funded right away. I did say that, that we have that money's coming through. We do have seven other positions that are funded that aren't being filled yet. And I don't know how many people have looked at the national media across the whole country. They're having problems with positions in the police department. I think they're done across the country, 175,000 positions. It's not just us. It's across the country. So, we are digging in deep. We just ended up giving, finishing up a 9% raise for our police officers. 9%. So, we did dig deep in a lot of ways. So, there were some statements that came up here and attacking us, saying we weren't taking care of the situation. We have been. And we're getting into this position. The reason why I was against the tax measure two years ago, because it wasn't about this. It was about building a $30 million fire station. Aren't you glad we didn't do that one? We had been bought into that thing, and we would have been hurt. And that's what the discussion was about before. It wasn't addressing this pension obligation, which is not fashionable to do. I agree on this. I have sat down and talked to a lot of people. Had a gentleman come up, says, tax measures, great, we put 30% to police, 30% to fire, and 40% to general fund. I said, that's not going to work that way. And just like the city manager said, it's a pool of water we're dumping this into, and it's mixed up. One way or another, you got this sucking sound of the pension obligation coming out of it, one way or another. If we don't address this, we, we won't save the $21 million, which that savings is money that can be spent to help with the other support in the public safety component. I, I can go along with option five if, if there's some truthfulness in the gang enforcement component. And I have not seen any anticipated movement in the police department. I know if we put those other three positions, but maybe the city manager can tell me how, in option five, when it says gang enforcement, is there an anticipated component with this tax measure coming, coming forward?
Excuse me. No, the, right now, we're, we're actually having what's called appellate B testing this Saturday. We've had more people put in for it, because we've been out there marketing the fact that we have these positions open. So, if everyone went through, and if we got half the amount of people, and then half of us, they go through the other testing, we might be able to fill the 10 open positions. Council's not holding 10 positions. I want to make sure everybody out there knows, we have about 10 positions open, not being held. We do have three per the budget being held, but we have 10 that we just have not been able to find anybody to come in, either as a lateral transfer from another department, or from starting fresh, you know, a brand-new police officer. So, it's very exciting to know that we're going to have testing going on. So, right away, no. I mean, it's going to take a little bit of time, if we can fill those spots, to get that back, because it would be maintaining, those positions are maintaining right now. We just don't have anyone in there. So, it's, it wouldn't be adding 10 new positions that don't exist. So, yeah, that we could get back to that if we can get these people in and hired.
At that time, we would see the gang. So, I mean, it's already, I mean, are, is there an anticipation? I mean, and I'll wait till the chief get up, but, and those who've been paying attention on the TV, the City of Santa Barbara was down 19 PD positions. They were advertising commercials on TV. So, it's, it's, it's a battle that they're all fighting.
So, selfishly, I would like more. But the truth is, if we could at least reach what the council adjusted as our table of organization to 47, and free up those three positions, and we were able to hire the 10 positions as the city manager has indicated, we would then have the ability to staff some of those units, both traffic and probably a gang unit. But we would have to be fully staffed at 47 to do that.
Okay, well, hold on. Now, don't, don't take off yet. I just wanted, because if somebody asks me, I want to be able to tell them exactly what's up. So, I'm trying to get on board with the mayor here for number five. So, you're, you said the neighborhood police patrols. So, we, because if we get this, we'll get those other three positions for you.
So, we're down to three positions that we would need for the gang unit.
Okay.
And then, it would give me the ability to staff the traffic unit, and hopefully have another special detail to augment other selective enforcement efforts. So, we've done away with SCU, gang unit, traffic, and homeless, and narcotics. So, this would give us the ability. So, right now, we're able to provide patrol and investigative functions, but not the rest.
And that's not because of budget?
It's because we have 10 vacancies.
Okay. All right. Thank you for, that chief. And with that, I'd give you your second on five.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega.
You, you don't need anything more than a second, do you?
No, I just, your light was on, so I'm giving you the opportunity.
I'd like to actually say something to the public here. We have many people here that think, and we've mentioned that we do care. Otherwise, the tax measure would still be pending. But many people that are out here, you know, they need to work on their versatility a little bit, I believe, okay? Freedom of speech is one thing, but lambasting people for doing their job and coming up here and saying, oh, you're doing this, you're doing that. Many people are out here in the media. They're, we're on television, as you know, so we're subscribing to the, to the public, to the entire city. Anytime there's a question asked of anybody here, or anyone here of staff, it's the opportunity to educate people that are out there watching on TV. My family, my mother's out there. So, anybody that thinks that you guys are the only ones here listening, and you guys are the only ones making the decision, you're way off base. So, work on your versatility. You know, any one of you have the opportunity to come up to speak to each and every one of us and have an adult conversation. And if you haven't done that, then it's on you. So, basically, what we're trying to do is improve the city. We do need public support. We do need public safety. We do need our families to be safe. But you guys have to participate. You can't just sit back and throw rocks. So, I wanted to make sure that's clear. We are here to answer your questions in an adult fashion. Use that opportunity. We're here to support Lompoc. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbitt.
Yeah, just a couple of comments real quickly. Option five, option six, it doesn't matter. They're the same verbiage in a different way. What it looks like that we're trying to do is come up with ways to trick the voters. If we put it this way, then we'll get more votes than if we tell them this way. I want to just make a comment. I truthfully believe that Lompoc voters are a whole lot smarter than people that came up here think they are. I'm just going to make the comment. They've made the right decisions a lot in the past. I've seen very few failures with our voting in Lompoc. As far as the public safety, it's been said again, it's over and over and over. The city manager said it. It's been through all the budgets. Fire is fully manned. We are only down seven officers right now. Three of the positions that aren't full were done in negotiations with the police. So, I don't know where the concept is, that I keep hearing it over and over. The council cut the positions. They stopped the funding to the police. False rumor, not true. You heard it from the chief. You've heard it from the city manager. So, I guess, if we say it, it just doesn't matter. I just wanted to throw something out there also. One of the things that's going to happen, even with the new PEPRA and different tiers, raises on some of the, you know, you negotiate, you give raises. Raises extrapolate out to pension. One thing that we're doing right now in the council is paying very particular attention to what our debt will be down the road, so we're not in the position as bad as we are now. It, it's going to be a hard hill to climb, but whether you want to sugarshine it with option five, or sugarshine it with option six, it both, they all say the same thing. And I'm going to put my faith in the voters to figure it out. And I think they'll make the right decision.
Councilmember Mosby.
And if I can, there's, there's a book that's out there. I know it was in Lord Double's old office, Jasmine's office, McGinty's office, that, it was in there anyways, that talked about the, Mr. Tollis is gone, but the, the previous tax measure and the analytics behind it, and this study of, of what, of '06, '07. And in that study, it recognized why and what, and you, a 2% tax just wouldn't pass. In the study, the analytics were done. A half cent would be like a no-brainer. The one cent is about the max that you can go to get through. So, some people said it should be a two. There's a reason why, and the analytics are out there. You know, we see this work. We see it go. We see everything go along. We have some other things we're working on, a sustainable growth component, which can help with property tax components and sales tax measures. There are things that are coming around the corner, that are, that are on top of this. I mean, Lompoc's been getting by with basically just a inflationary growth component in the general fund revenues. And now with a, with a growth movement coming on, we will see an enhancement. That's really been one of the biggest problems, is we didn't have the 30% growth Santa Maria had, which also gave them 30% in their budget. We've been flatlining and trying to just get by with inflation. And it's hard, it's hard to bump up and pay more, especially when the public's on, on limited incomes. I think a lot of the people are under fixed incomes. They haven't been getting 30% raises. And it's difficult to get this way. But I, I really do believe that the public understands where we're going, and in a short amount of time, they will see that money will be freed up through the general fund and other movements we're doing, that you will see the enhancements and improvements, because we are being fiscally responsible here.
Councilmember Vega.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to see if maybe we can alter the motion to change a couple word out, okay? So, in the first line, where it says to maintain public services, if you would in your motion, to improve public services. I think, listening to the community, they'd like to change out the word maintain for improve. I think that shows forward motion, and that, in case we need to enhance. So, it could be enhance or improve, but I think it's a better word than maintain.
Is that the only change you'd like to see?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm okay with that change, even though I feel it's pushing the limit of it. But if Councilmember Mosby will support that second.
I was going to ask the city attorney if it, if it looked like we were, maybe the city manager.
I don't think I can give an opinion, opinion on this any better than the council might. If the council thinks that it's accurate to say the measure's going, with the money that it frees up is going to improve public services, then that change is accurate. Maybe other staff have input as well.
Let's see if the chiefs are smiling over there. Not smiling. I, I'll go along with it.
Okay. So, we have a motion to adopt resolution number 6280, parentheses 19, with option five, changing the word to improve from maintain to improve, as the motion. Any other discussions or questions? Councilmember Vega.
And, yeah, I see you looking at me. Gosh. Anyway, the reason I would have liked to have kept the words maintain and improve, but because of the, the word count, okay?
Count, yeah.
So, I wanted to make that clarity, okay? So, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions, I will ask council to vote. Yep, wait, wait.
Sorry, real quick. We do have, right below there, you might see, it says 72 words. We can go up to 75. So, you have the ability to add, well, if you wanted maintain and improve.
So, you would like it to say?
Can you guys, would you guys, can you guys wordsmith it to make 75?
Basically, you're saying you'd like it to say to maintain and improve?
That gets us to 74, so you're good at that.
Are we, can we make that fit? I think that'd make everybody happy, including Councilman Mosby and anybody else, I hope.
Again, I'm fine with that, because it meets the word count.
Okay.
I'm, we're so close. I just, I, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, I know. And I hope the public's listening. We're listening to your public comment, and I agree. We need to enhance, maintain, improve, whatever word you want to put in there, as long as it doesn't exceed 75 words, okay?
Councilmember Mosby.
I'll go along.
Thank you. So, the motion is to adopt resolution number 6280, parentheses 19, with option five, with the addition of and improve after maintain. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. So, no clapping. Wave your hands. Be excited. So, what that leaves us with is item C regarding adoption resolution 6281, directing city attorney to draft the impartial analysis and setting ballot arguments, as well as whether or not we will have rebuttal arguments, and whether or not we will do that through having a up-to-two council member ad hoc to do that. Before we have that discussion, would anyone like to public comment on that? Seeing no one rise, we will close that public comment. Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a subcommittee of two council members to go ahead and make that rebuttal and move from there.
Do you have?
And I'd like to be a part of it.
All right.
If anybody else wants to.
I'm happy to be the second on that, given I have the experience of writing the last one, if you guys are okay with that. So, we have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution 6281-19, directing the city attorney to draft the impartial analysis and setting the ballot argument, as well as to have a rebuttal argument in the positive with a ad hoc committee of myself and rebuttal argument in the positive with a ad hoc committee of myself and councilmember Vega to write that ballot argument in favor. Anything I missed from that?
I just want to clarify, so you do want to have responses to the arguments, both for and against?
At least a for, and that means we wouldn't write an against, which would open it up to someone else writing the against.
Right.
Correct.
Right, as I understand the motion, council's going to have a subcommittee to do the argument for, we'll take all comers and, and choose them according to law for the argument against. That's fine. But then the council can choose if you want to have responses to those arguments in the ballot pamphlet, or not. You don't have to have response.
Thank you for catching that. Do we want to allow responses to our argument or not? Councilmember Vega.
I would say no.
So, to add to that motion, we will not allow responses to the pro and for arguments, and we will write the pro argument with the subcommittee. Any other questions or clarity for that? Seeing none, I need a second on that motion?
I will second.
Councilmember Cordova seconds it. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Item D is resolution number 6282-19 appropriating funds to pay for the special election. Any public comment on that? Seeing no one rise, we will close public comment and bring that back for a motion. Councilmember Vega.
I'll make a motion that we authorize city payment for such consolidated election services. Yes.
Thank you. I need a second.
I'll second.
Councilmember Cordova seconds that. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. And I will make the final request motion that the city attorney read the title in. Do we need a second on that as well to do, to do that?
I'll give a second.
Yes, it needs, and it needs to be a motion to waive, to read the title and waive the further reading of the order.
So the motion is to read the title and waive further reading. I have a motion from councilmember Vega, and, I mean, a second from councilmember Vega after making the motion, so any discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0, and you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Just to read the title of the tax measure that will be put on the ballot. It's an ordinance to the city council of the city of Lompoc, county of Santa Barbara, state of California, adding chapter 3.52 to the Lompoc municipal code, imposing a temporary transactions and use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, subject to approval of a majority of the electors voting on the tax measure at the special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, March 3, 2020. And again, that's just to place it on the ballot, not to adopt it. So thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you. Thank you to all the public for this. No clapping, but wave your hands, slap yourselves on the back for doing all this. We're going to take a 10-minute break because we still have a long agenda ahead of us. So we'll be back in 10 minutes.
We'll go ahead and reconvene from our 10-minute break to continue the agenda with new business and item number five, the award of project number FY17B1 Municipal Pool Demolition Award Constructed Contract to American Wrecking Incorporated Adoption of Resolution 6276-19 Approving Supplemental Appropriations, and our senior civil engineer, Christos Staus, will make the presentation.
Good evening.
Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to recuse myself on items five, six, and seven because I own property within 500 feet of all three of those. So please come and get me, I'll be outside eating pizza.
No, he has to come back at the end of the meeting, so no, he doesn't get to go home. He's close enough that he could watch and return, but...
He's hoping Domino's delivers.
Pizza and donuts, let's go.
It went to sleep forever. Did you guys hear this at all?
Eh, no, it must be, it must be on. It's not on. I have to talk now. Oh, I see. I guess, I don't have to wait for the slide presentation. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. My name is Christos Staus, I'm a civil engineer with the Department of Public Works here for the City of Lompoc. And I came here to present to you the project that we have just undertook the last few months. It's demolition for the old municipal pool here adjacent to this property, which is scheduled to happen upon your action for the next month. We came here to discuss about awarding the construction contract and adapting Resolution Number 6276, which authorizes the associated costs with this work. This project is gonna remove the risks imposed to the city by the abandoned structure and its contents, and prepare, of course, the site for future beneficial use. We don't have any specific plans for its use right now, except for being an open space and kind of alter the view of city hall, basically. A little bit on the project schedule, based on the award of tonight's award, we're hoping to have the pre-construction meeting on October 15th of next month, next month, basically. And we plan to start immediate work on October 22nd, and provided everything moves right along, which I anticipate it will, we should have this project completed by January 20, by January 2020. Something about the pool history, it was open and ready for the first plus on Saturday, March 24th in 1956. It served the city of Lompoc for many, many years. I've talked to many people that have swam and played within the pool. And back in 1982, the city conducted an engineering survey on the adequacy of the building to withstand earthquakes that did not went well. And the following years, back in 1999, and at the end in 2000, in the year 2000, we have also gotten two more engineering reports that condemned the city as being deficient to withstand the new earthquake regulations. In May 17th, 2000, the city issued a press release and that identified the pool as being closed indefinitely. Since 2000, and over the years, 2008, 2011, 2013, and finally in 2017, and mostly due to primarily financial concerns, the city had deferred any demolition action until January 3rd of 2017, when the board adopted Resolution 60...
Eighty-six?
Yes, 6086. And they approved an option to finance the demolition project for up to $750,000. Let's go to the next slide. Here's what I found from the old opening of the pool. That's a Lompoc record dated back in Thursday of March, I believe it's 22nd. And that's when the pool was ready for the first plus, as they, they mentioned on this article there. The pool stayed open again for 14 to 16 hours per day, seven days a week, and it was replaced in 2006 with a new aquatic center that serves currently the city of Lompoc. We started this project back in February of 2019. We ran, we prepared plans, specification, estimate. One major thing that we made sure to understand and bring forward to the contractors was the quantity and the volume of concrete they had to destroy and remove out of the site. So that's why we prepared this model. We were able to identify all items of the pool, you know, all concrete volumes of the main structure. The adjacent buildings are minor buildings and they don't really constitute a major construction cost, as the pool itself. Another thing we did, we already had actually an asbestos and lead report dated back in 2008, but just to be coherent with the new regulations, we also did another hazardous material assessment just a few months ago. What we tested for asbestos again and confirmed the findings of the 2008. We tested for lead, and we also made an inventory of the stored chemicals, because as you know, the pools had a lot of chemicals when it closed, a lot. It had the chemicals that it needed when it closed, and later on, stored some other chemicals that are within the pool right now. And they need our immediate attention because, because they're dangerous to our health, I guess. Simple as that. The municipal pool demolition, we bid the project, we opened bids on Thursday, August 8th. We had some eight contractors bidding the project and with prices and costs ranging from $317,000 to $615,000. The low bid really surprised me. I, I was, my bid was close to $500,000, to tell you the truth. So I welcomed the American Wrecking's quote for $317,000. And that's the contract I would like to award. The project budget, we have the construction contract for $317,000 approximately. We have, we're requesting for a construction contract contingency of $35,000. Our engineering staff time during project development and contract administration is up to $80,000. And we're also asking for another $40,000 to make sure that we take some of these chemicals out, which is gonna be done independently of the construction contract, and also make sure that we backfill the cavity of the pool and have the proper compaction testing and the proper consulting support services for that work. So the total cost for the pool is, for this project is gonna be $470,650, and which will be allocated from, which will be allocated from the restricted fund balance, which is, I guess, engrossed into the Municipal Pool Demolition Fund, which is some amount. That's what I have in terms of the project scope and the project budget, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Councilmember Vega.
On the finance end, where would we direct the questions as far as to Dean? It may not be an engineer's question, but I believe before we had $750,000 that was allotted for this project. Is that correct, or as I see the appropriations?
We did, we did a loan in 2017, so we've been paying on it for two and a half years. That's why there's a balance on there. We're paying right now about $88,000 a year. So we wouldn't have to draw the whole $750,000 based upon his, you know, he did a great job getting a really good bid, so.
So the money could go back, Dean? Is that what's going on?
It has to be, it has to be used for the pool demo, so it'd be one thing, we just wouldn't have to pay it back, which is nice.
Okay. That's my question. So we have the money, it's already there?
Restricted, it's in our fund balance as a restricted cash amount, so, yeah.
Thank you.
City manager.
I just, to go a little bit further than what Councilman Vega said, is, you know, this was not found money. We knew about the money back in 2017 when we did a refund on this to do nothing but put it towards the demolition of the pool. So it has been there, it's been known. I had a couple comments from people saying, oh, it was just found. But no, we knew about it. And it was purposely set aside only for the demolition.
And another really good thing is it actually earned $11,000 in interest, so.
Can we still continue earning interest afterwards? Yeah? Okay, bad question. Sorry, guys. Okay, never mind, I get it. You're still earning interest on it right now, right? Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff before we open for public comment? Seeing none, thank you. We'll open the floor for public comment on this item. If you would like to speak to it, please step forward to the podium, and you have three minutes.
Lee Royce Clay, resident of Lompoc. I just heard the comments that this is restricted money and so forth, but I've seen a lot of restricted money in my past that managed to slip away. I suggest you abandon this project and hire a couple of police officers. You do a lot of, get a lot of public comment to the positive on that, I'm sure.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing no one else rise, we'll close the discussion. Once again, for the public, unfortunately, because it is restricted funds, these funds were pulled as part of a loan that is only allowed for the spending on the pool. If we could use the $754,000 to hire officers, we would have all rallied for it. So, love the idea, unfortunately, it can't be done. Councilmember Starbuck, would you like to make a motion, given?
After all these years, absolutely. I would love to go ahead and recommend, move staff recommendations on this.
I'll give a second.
You have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes for 01. So, public hearing, item number six is Appeal of Building Permit Application Expiration for Construction of Rental Unit at 204C North C Street, B2016-0407. And Councilmember Mosby is still recused from the discussions. We have Building Division Contract Plans Examiner and Schneider to make the presentation, followed by the applicant to make his appeal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. This appeal is similar to a discussion previously held in August regarding the same property for what council determined to be the same issue at the time. This property made an application for a building permit in 2016 under a building code that we reference as the 2013 building code that was in effect at that time. The applicant received a list of comments and corrections that he needed to make to his plans, and has not, to date, ever resubmitted that information back to the city. The city, in adopting their building codes, has administrative procedures that specify that an applicant has 180 days, six months, to respond to comments and obtain their building permit. No response was ever received by the city, no resubmission of plans was ever submitted, so the application was expired in January of 2017. I do want to point out there is a minor typo in the discussion. If you take the February 6th, 2017 expiration, and add 90 days for an extension, you would reach May of 2017. That 90-day extension would have been possible if it had been requested, but it was not. The permit has been expired since the Janu-, or, excuse me, the February date of 2017. We do have records in our system that indicate a letter was sent, however, we have not been able to locate a copy of that letter from December of 2017 indicating that the permit was expired. We have verified that we do not possess any documents or records submitted to the city for that project. I do want to point out that the city has an obligation through the state to preserve residential construction records for 90 days. After the expiration of 90 days, the city is free to dispose or keep any of the documents that are submitted after a building project is finished. The city has no obligation to keep records for projects that don't progress forward. To the best of our ability, we have determined that we have no records that were submitted in 2016. We do not have an application under the applicable building code, which is the 2016 building code, and we do not have any way to recreate something that happened in the past and use a set of rules from 2013 to construct a building at this time. All of this was part of the discussion we had in August, and remains the facts that we have on this project at this time. We do not have an application, we do not have documents to build from, and we do not have anything to process. At this point, we are asking that the council deny the appeal and direct the applicant, as you did in August, to submit the project he wishes to build, compliant with the current code, so that he can move forward with his project. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, first, the first question I have is, Mr. Trup, did you see this staff report?
Yes, I did.
Okay, because there's no signatures on mine.
Oh.
Nor Ms. Hallercon either. So I just question you, did the attorney see it?
I saw it, yes.
Okay. So, just a simple nod on this, you built this same project on E Street. I'm curious how, everybody here always says infill. We don't ever want to expand, we need infill. We did one project last year, and it was an infill project, and the person that did it said, "I will never do another project here." So we'll probably not have another infill project the way that this is. What's very disturbing to me here is the fact that we have a staff report that's been referenced and gone through, and we've done everything on paper here to deny an infill project. But there's not a single thing in here that says, "If we did this, then we could build this." So again, it's just like, we don't care. This is our reputation throughout the county. We suck at having projects done in Lompoc. I hear it all the time. Contractors don't even want to work in Lompoc. They live here and then leave to go somewhere else. I'm, I'm just curious, what can we do to do this project?
Madam Mayor and council members, in order for someone to process a construction permit, they must prepare and submit construction plans.
That was done.
No, we do not have any construction plans in compliance with the building code that is currently in effect. No documents have been submitted since the council adopted the 2016 building code, and the three-year period in which that is in effect is rapidly ending. We will have a new building code starting January 1st. We will call that the 2019 California building code, and that will encompass an entirely new set of regulations that we have no choice, we must enforce. They are adopted by the state of California and imposed upon every city in the state.
You know, I guess the answer still isn't out there. The same plans were used two blocks away. At some period, the same plans were submitted to do it on the C Street location, and there's a list of corrections. There's all of this that comes back. What would have been the difference between the one on E Street and this one?
Every three years, all of the building and construction codes for the state of California are amended and adopted. There are numerous changes throughout, I believe, 14 separate documents that are implemented by the state and imposed upon the city.
So in the end scheme here, then, there's nothing we can do to assist Mr. Halsey in building this duplex because of a state law and a letter we lost? Is a yes or no answer on this, is what I'm getting?
Mr. Halsey was given the opportunity to respond to comments in 2016. He never submitted a response. He's talked to lots of people, but he's never actually done the work that's necessary to obtain a building permit, which is revising and resubmitting the documents that are required to obtain the permit.
Okay, well, we went the long way for a no answer. So really, there's nothing that we can do as a council that says, "Let us build one infill project this year. Let's let Mr. Halsey build the same thing he built a few years ago." There's nothing we can do. Then again, yes or no?
The city does not have the ability to choose which building code they're going to apply. The state decides that. He must comply with the codes that the state has adopted.
Right. I get you. That means no. So I guess there's nothing that the city can do, there's nothing you can do, and the only thing that Mr. Halsey can do is either spend tons more money, sell the lot, or just forget the whole thing, huh?
Each person who wants to build has to comply with state law. We don't have a choice.
Any more questions for staff before we let the appellant speak? Councilmember Vega.
Yes, ma'am. During this process through the years that you weren't here also, I mean, is there a, I see that there's no obligation to keep any plans or paperwork, you know, past a certain period. I guess it would be redundant when someone doesn't follow through. But during your research here, what do we have here, okay? There must have been an application, and we do have some paperwork here that I see, okay? So there must have been some paperwork. What I understand is he filed, didn't complete whatever he was asked to do, and he never, and the permit or expired at one point, and it was never reinstated, is that correct? And he never, he was probably provided a checklist, or maybe not, I'm not sure how far he got. Okay, I'm just asking you, you're the one that probably had to do some research and stuff.
The previous submittal included all of the corrections that were provided by various departments and staff for all of the corrections that they felt were necessary for the documents that were submitted. None of those corrections were ever made and returned to the city. There was a lot of top discussion, according to Mr. Halsey, about what he wanted to do, but it didn't result in any new plans coming back to the city. And at some point, the city simply doesn't have enough room to keep sets of plans for projects that aren't going to be built. Once the permit application expires and the code changes, we're on to a new submittal with new regulations that need to be complied with.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, another question here would be, the timeframes. I remember there was a question asked that there wasn't any rule or regulation or timeline that a permit actually expires. And I remember from the previous meeting, is that a true statement? Do we have a certain amount of time from no response? I'm just gonna ask you to repeat it if you, if you've already said that. From no response, where it just automatically goes dormant, does it actually expire? And I heard you say something about there's a 90-day period. But I'm just kind of gonna ask you to reclarify what the procedure is when someone doesn't follow through or reinstate their permit.
The initial application for a building permit is valid for 180 days, a six-month time period. If the permit, if the permit is not issued, plan check and the processing is not completed within that 180-day period, there is the opportunity to request a 90-day extension to complete that documentation. The same rules also apply in a slightly different format once construction starts. You must complete and pass an inspection every 180 days. In other words, you can't start a building permit in 2003 and then just keep picking at it for 15 or 20 years. You must keep making progress every 180 days, so that we don't have long-term projects that become public nuisances. You must keep making progress every one hundred and eighty days so that we don't have long-term projects that become public nuisances.
One more question. You know, the foundation request, I'm kind of going to move forward to a different area here, okay? The foundation request that Mr. Halsey had said before, they kind of told him he couldn't use. Then it came back and it was reutilized. So if it was someone else that came in here, okay, say they go and restate their permits, reinstate their permits and broaden their plans and everything. You're familiar with a foundation that was in question, I guess, that was on the city website or something? In your estimation, is that a, is that a legal foundation that was used for a purpose if it was somebody else other than Mr. Halsey? I mean, maybe, maybe you can kind of read into what was happening back then, maybe?
I have about thirty-five years' experience in this field as a civil engineer and as a building official. The state of California's regulations have required a soils report, which is a technical investigation of the subject site with engineering recommendations on how that building must be built to meet the minimum safety codes for every new building. It is not uncommon for jurisdictions to allow a small addition, say, for a residential home, to use a modified footing that allows them to build a small addition to their home without having to go through the expense of doing a soils report. So that is a common use of that type of detail. If you want to add a fourth bedroom to your home and you're doing a ten by fifteen addition, the cost of the addition is close to the cost of a soils report if you're in unsuitable soil. And it is often considered a reasonable use of discretion to say that making a ten by fifteen addition more solid and more stable than the fifteen hundred square foot house it's attached to, an unfair burden on the process. But when you're building a brand-new building and you have a soils report and you have a professional engineer who's given you the recommendations on how you need to build that building safely, we expect those recommendations to be followed, and we require that those reports be submitted.
So the soils report would have mandated what type of foundation would have been recommended for the different building site, whether it's a duplex, a triplex, or a single-family home, is that correct?
Yes, the soils engineer has a variety of options that he can recommend for ways to provide a suitable and stable foundation. I've seen foundations for single-family homes that have fifty-foot pylons driven into the ground. And I've seen areas where they can do a six-inch concrete slab with post tension cables, and they're fine. It just depends on the type of construction that's common and available in the area and what the most economic and reasonable approach is to provide the foundation. And that's a joint decision between the geotechnical firm that's done the investigation and has the technical knowledge on that side and the engineer who does the design of the building.
So it's not a, a choice by the home builder themselves to go outside the recommendation and try and use a different sort of a foundation or structure? I mean, is that?
No. It's required to be prepared by a licensed professional from a California licensed geotechnical engineer or a licensed civil or structural engineer.
And I got you, I appreciate it. And you know, I guess so it's not their choice to come in just because it's, there's less cost involved to try and use something else? I mean, I.
That would be something they work out with the geotechnical engineer and their project engineer.
Gotcha.
Because there's many different ways.
So they can work that out with their engineer or their, their project engineer or their soils engineer to modify the recommendation before it gets to you guys, is that correct?
Yes, they can look at other ways to accomplish what the engineers say they need to accomplish.
So right now, Mr. Halsey is at an impasse because he doesn't have an updated permit. There's no extension that's able to be found that he's reinstated that permit or that the permit has in fact, or it has in fact expired, even though I heard some rhetoric before that they said, hey, there was no timetable that said that it actually expired, that it's just dormant, or something like that, okay?
The code adoption that was done in two thousand and sixteen and the code adoption that was done for the two thousand and thirteen also included the same language that a building permit application expires after one hundred and eighty days. So that requirement has changed.
And that's something that's, that is in the rulebook here in Lompoc as well as the state, is that correct?
It is part of the documents that are provided from the state, and it has not been amended by the city of Lompoc. There are opportunities to make amendments for those kinds of regulations that relate specifically to the administrative portion of how you operate your building.
Okay, I got you. So if it needed to be modified, it would be at this level here to change the timetable or the guidelines or whatever they are for the restrictions or expiration of permits?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
City Attorney, why are we seeing this if there's nothing we can do about it? If we say, oh, we're going to agree with the appellant here, Mr. Halsey, then it's still, he has nothing to do with it. It's, it's really a dead issue before it gets here, it appears.
It is. But the reason that it can get to council is because the building code says that any decision made by the building official can be appealed to the city's appeal board. And in Lompoc, we don't have a designated appeal board. The council's never created one. So that means that it defaults to the council as the appeal board. We also don't have an appeal deadline in Lompoc because the council's never adopted an appeal deadline. That's why this decision that was made by the building official back in two thousand and sixteen, I believe, that the, or seventeen, that the application had expired, can still be appealed today. But the reason it can get to you, to just answer your question, is because the building code allows for appeals to the appeal board of any decision made by the building official.
So we're really doing kind of a slow dance here, a schematic. It's, there's nothing we can do from Mr. Halsey. There's nothing the building department can do. We can't do anything. If we said, well, we'd like to see the project go forward, we'd like to overturn the building official, then what happens? It goes to what, the state? Would they do the review at this point? Or does it go back to building and say, well, doesn't matter what the council did, you're expired? I'm confused what the out is here.
The building code says that the, that his application expired back in two thousand and seventeen. So if the council decided to overturn the building official's decision that it had expired, they couldn't, that would be illegal. You could not do that because it would be in violation of the building code. I think the way that the council can help Mr. Halsey is by advising him to submit an applica-, a new application, a new building permit application, which the council did the last time he was before the council, at the last appeal. Council, I think, directed staff to work with Mr. Halsey in any way possible to try to get his duplex built. We did reach out to Mr. Halsey and tried to set up a meeting. But before we had sent that communication to try to set up the meeting, he already filed this second appeal about his application having expired. So we are trying to work with him. If he submits a new application, I'm sure that we will do what we can to help him get the duplex built.
Believe it or not, I'm a lot clearer.
Any more questions for staff before we give Mr. Halsey some time at the microphone? Seeing none, thank you. Mr. Halsey, if you would like to make some comments, please come forward. Be aware that we did spend over an hour on this matter last time. Thank you.
Gary Halsey, again, trying to get this project right. Okay, so bottom line is, we're talking about expiration of my plan process. So I have some paperwork here for all of you to read the code. I would like to start this off by having you view the last page of the packet. And at the top left corner says Section one oh five point three point two. And it describes the time limitation of an application. And it says that it will expire in one hundred and eighty days. And then there's this little paragraph underneath it that says, "Unless, unless such application has been pursued in good faith or a permit has been issued." So there was no permit issued. So we're going back to, "Have I pursued this in good faith?" And I'm saying, yes, I have. Now, if you will turn to the very first page, this is from Sacramento County. I have contacted Santa Maria and I've contacted Santa Barbara. They have adopted, it's part of the Section one oh five three two, that says, "Unless." Santa Maria and Santa Barbara are both telling me that that includes activity. It doesn't necessarily include you have to change your plans or modify your plans or submit your plans. What it is, is it's activity. If I go into the city building department with an issue that I'm trying to proceed to redo my plans and present them back to the city, that is activity, it's interaction, which are all part of this one hundred and eighty days. What this is, is if I do not do anything within one hundred and eighty days, then the application, it's not expired. There is no expiration. It's called abandonment. I have not abandoned this project. I have worked with every single building official that has come my way through this project. I first approached this project, and you know, like I told you guys before, I don't like to just waste money, nobody does. So part of that is, why go and change your plans if they're just going to be denied and come back to the same issue? So I went into, when I got the plan correction back in August, oh, I don't know, eighth, I guess it was, of two thousand and sixteen or something in that nature, there were several plan corrections on there that, that were not code and didn't need to be. One of them was with the sewer department. I had built a two thousand and three duplex with a sewer line going directly down the center of the building with no ninety-degree bends or forty-fives or anything. And I did it the way it's supposed to be done, which is three-inch transition to four-inch at the party wall and then right into the sewer, which is still the way it needs to be done now, according to William Reich, Bob Holloway, and all the plumbers in this town, it is code. One of the plan corrections that came back was from the local sewer department, from Doran. And he says, well, you got to put in two sewer lines. And I said, you've got to be kidding me. I said, no, I don't. I have two water meters. And Doran says, well, that's the way we'd get our billing. And I said, no, you don't have a meter on your sewer line, it's on the water line, you're getting paid for that. So that took about three months to go through. I had to deal with the official, and he wouldn't respond to me. I kept going in and asking him. I said, you know, hey, I want to do it this way. And they're like, no, we want you to run two sewer lines. And so that went for about three months, like I said. Finally, I got kind of a little bit upset and called and left him a voicemail. And it was about ten minutes later, they called him back and says, oh, yeah, we were just talking about you. I said, I bet you were. And he says, yeah, we're going to go ahead and let you run the single sewer line, but we want you to do this and this and this. And I thought, well, that's kind of ridiculous, but I'm willing to do it. They wanted me to run two laterals into a main. So, well, okay. So there's three months gone right there, just dealing with that. Now, this footing issue, it was on the website, and it was active and it was usable. That's what I wanted to use. And that led me into, well, first dealing with a temporary building official that said, I can't make the decision on that, so we have to wait, we have a Raphael coming. Well, I didn't know it was Raphael, but, so he got there. And he looked at it, and he says, well, I've got to pass that on to this other department, which they came back and said, well, it's not even our department to deal with. So that led to Raphael telling me, he says, well, if you can go get a letter from the soils engineer stating that this is an undisturbed soils lot, because that is the criteria for that footing design that was on the website at the time. They're talking about a limitation of square footage. There is no limitation of square footage in the code at all. I have, well, I take that back. I have found one in, in the county code that says four thousand square feet. What it, what it really boils down to is, it boils down to soils classifications. It boils down to, how, how big is the building? How much weight is the building putting on the ground? The soils here in Lompoc are CLMH, which is clay silts. And it has a bearing pressure of fifteen hundred PSI. My building has eleven hundred PSI. This building was specifically designed for that footing design back in two thousand and three. I went to a district or development review board, DRB, meeting, and these issues came up, exactly this same issue. And I believe that, I can't remember his name, but some, it comes back to me as Johnson something, who was in the engineering department. And me and Howdy Spicer went to this meeting, and we were explaining all this to him. And they were kind of arguing a little bit back and forth about it. And I just said, excuse me, I'm using oversized footings. I'm using a two-story footing, basically, for a one-story building. And they said, oh, okay, good, boom, here you go. It was, it was available, and it was available at the time when I submitted this plan. I went into the building department before I even changed my plans or updated my plans to the two thousand and thirteen building code and talked to all the heads in the office. And I said, what do you need, what do you need? I was told by Vida, Gary, update your plans to two thousand and thirteen building code, bring it back, the footings are good, it's on our website. Everybody agreed. I took it back, I submitted it, and it went to JAS. And I was told by Michael, who was in between Raphael and Al Johnson, that somebody had made a real big mistake. He didn't use those words, he used kind of colorful words. And I said, yeah, I know. And he says, uh, this is legit, and we're going to allow it. So I went that direction. And prior to me actually written equipment, doing some compaction that he wanted on the surface, I came back just to make sure, well, he was gone. And then we had Al. And so I'm like, Al, look, this is what we're doing, I'm not going to allow that. Prior to that, Raphael asked me, he says, can you get a letter from the soils guy? And I said, yes. And I brought it and I gave it, and y'all have a copy of that in the first packet that I sent you. There's a lot of information in that first packet. There's letters that I wrote to the city several times during this whole process, one of which you'll see in there that was a note from Al, you know, that he signed. And that was, I don't know, eight, I don't remember the date. But it was after that they're saying that it was expired, which I wasn't even aware of. I was still pursuing this as it's ongoing. I am ongoing, in good faith, doing the activity. If you look through this paperwork, there's sections in here that talk about, like, for example, on the very first page of permit expirations, it describes what activity is. You know, it's defined as a field inspection for permitted work or recorded plan review, interaction, or activity for a plan check. I have done that. I have been to every single building official that's been hired, and I have told them, look. And I, now, whether they've recorded or not, I don't know. You know, I can't, I don't have any control over them. But I have had sit-down meetings with every single one of them. Every time, Tower Property has been watching after this, they manage my property. Laura called me and said, hey, we got a new building official in town, and we're hearing that he's pro-build. I'm like, okay, good, his name was Michael. I don't know where he is. I asked a city clerk for the, for a copy of everybody that's been hired, his name wasn't even on there. They didn't know who it was. He may have been a subcontractor or somebody, I don't know. But he was only here for a short period of time. I've heard that they caught him sleeping after he made a move here or something, and they fired him. I don't know. So that was after Raphael. Raphael, he just denied it with the letter that you all have in the prior paperwork from GSI Soils where Rick signed and said that, yes, this is an undisturbed soils lot, that they came out and drilled it. It's never been built on, it's an infill lot. And now, the city building footing plan that, on the, on the website, it says that the mission of City of Lompoc is here to help you to get these projects. the mission of City of Longpoke is here to help you to get these projects going, and we provide these plans for you. There was about 10 or 15 of them on there. You all have a copy of that. I came in last time stating that Al had removed all those, and he kinda referred back to, "Nah, he don't have any internet skills to do that type of stuff." Well, they're gone again. And I believe that Gilda had pulled them up and, and mentioned last time that you had seen that they were on the city's website. So they had got put back somehow. I had questioned Jeff about that, and he didn't seem to know anything about it, city attorney. And, well, they're gone again. So I don't really know what's going on, other than the fact that it seems like it's really hard to get anything done here at the building department in Longpoke. And I'm kinda the one that, that all what I'm hearing from everybody, you know, is, "Well, it's me. I'm still here." Everybody's questioning, "Why are you still here? Why didn't you just build it? Why didn't you do this? Why didn't you just resubmit?" Well, because some of these things need to be fixed. And, you know, I got really sick and had a couple deaths in the family. If you look down at Section 2, it talks about permit extensions. And, you know, 2A says, "The only exceptions for the rule are extenuating circumstances." Well, I'm looking at some extenuating circumstances. I had two deaths in the family at the time this all happened. I had a tooth infected that went into my sinuses, and I had to have five surgeries, one in my spinoid sinus. I was trying to deal with all that, and dealing with this. And Vida told me, she says, "Gary, you just need to appeal it." And I said, "Well, what's that gonna do for me?" She says, "Nothing, 'cause it's gonna come right back to the building department, 'cause we don't have an appeals place." And I'm like, "Well, what good is that gonna do me, Vida?" She says, "You're kinda in a bad spot right now." Well, now they're saying that, um, they sent me a letter. I didn't get it. I have a P.O. box here in town, at the box shop. They monitor my mail for me, 'cause there are times that I've been gone. Laura at Tower Property Management monitors my mail. Both of them said, "Gary, you didn't get nothing during that time at all." 'Cause Laura calls me and says, "Okay, you got this, and this, and this." Or Bob calls me, or Linda calls me, "Hey, you got a package. You got this and that." And, you know, I told them, I said, "Look, there's certain things that I'm really interested in right now, so can you please police that for me? Anything from the IRS, anything from the City of Longpoke, anything official, call me right away." "Yes, we will." Nothing. I got nothing. And the city doesn't have anything to show that I did get anything. They're just saying that they sent me a letter. Well, who sent it? And when did it get sent? And where is it? There's gotta be something somewhere. So, bottom line is, is I'm saying that I have continually been working on this within that 180-day period. That 180-day period is, is not 180 days, and then it expires, and you're dead, and you're done. It says you have to do something within that 180 days. And I have done that religiously. I have made sure that I have gone back with all my information. Look, I, I even had Raphael, when all this came up, and he wanted a letter. He was just looking for any way out of trying to do this. He looked over at Vida and says, "Is this legit?" And Vida says, "It's on our website." And then, you know, I've done everything I know to do. I have tried my darndest to stay active on this. I didn't, I wouldn't go in and spend money and, and put a, uh, application in and then just walk away and abandon it. I wanna build a duplex. I wanted to build two of them. My plan was to get the first, I'm trying to save money at the same time, right? And I'm trying, trying to do the right thing. So my original plan was this, real simple. Go in, get my plan, hopefully, do it the way that the city, uh, website suggests, in an easy manner, where we're gonna use, uh, city footing design and all that, which, like I said again, my building was designed for that. And then I had another lot I was gonna buy on East Street. It's an infill lot, too. And I was in contract, verbal contract, with Mr. Sal Angelo. And I was just gonna take the, uh, application, and if I got my permit, I was gonna say, "I wanna do it again." And I had time. It was in August. Had they approved my project, that's what would've happened. There would've been two of them. 2013 building code, everything's all drawn up. Yes, I did change to the 2016 building code. I do have permits for that, and I'm ready to submit that. But that's not my intention, because there is no, how am I gonna submit a 2016 building code and be right at the same spot where I was in 2013? You can't do that. So I didn't wanna go that way, and I still don't. And that's why I'm appealing this. Because I don't believe that I'm expired, or abandoned. And the code supports that. I've called California State Code Enforcement out of Arcata. They've explained it to me the same way, that, uh, basically, I says, "You stop at, after unless filing, unless your application has been pursued in good faith." I think I've been in good faith. I think I've been perfectly honest and straight up with everybody in the building department. I've been working with them continually, and I don't believe that I should be considered abandoned on my permit process. And that's really the bottom line. And there's a lot of, a lot of supporting documents for me on that. You know, I've been personally pursuing that, and there, there's other things in here that are supportive to me. Some are not so supportive, um, in timeframe of years and things like that. But the City of Longpoke has adopted the model code. That was the first question that came up from a lawyer. He says, "Well, you gotta find out if they've made any changes to the code for Longpoke." So I submitted to the city clerk a request application to ask if there was any adoptions to this Section 103.5, or 105.3.2, and there was not. So you guys are under the model code for the state of California, and under the model code, I am not expired. And, I don't know. You guys have any questions for me?
Councilmember Vega.
Mr. Halsey, a couple things. I'm looking at your soils report here.
Yeah.
And I don't see a recommendation for a certain foundation here on this, okay?
No, because you, you're not gonna get that recommendation for a soil, for a footings design from an engineer that wants to do it his way. Um, I'm, I'm hanging my hat on the fact that the City of Longpoke was offering a, a footings design for my building. My specific building, which was specifically designed for that footing by a local guy who had been drawing plans in this town for 50 years, and his name was Al Swanson. He was very well aware of that. Um, there was a lady that was hired at the building department after Vida had left, and I had a conversation with her, and she told me, she says, "Yeah." She says, "We've done this a lot before, but for some reason, they're not doing it anymore." That's what I was told. That was Sue, I believe her name was. She said she's issued many of these permits. I'd like to know how many of these permits have been issued. I know I got one in 2003.
Yeah, you sound very knowledgeable. It looks like you've been...
I've been through this a lot. I mean, in detail.
But it sounds, it sounds like there's a battle between using the footing or not, and a difference of opinion.
I think what it is really is, they just don't wanna allow it, for whatever reason, and that they're using every way that they can, in fact, even taking things off the website. I think that's what it is. I think it's just, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't really get what it is.
Um, payment of fees, okay? I think we went back there and asked you before. You said that they wouldn't allow you to, or you can't reinstate your permit because they don't have any record of you following through with any of the requests. Is that correct? I mean, even now, and then I, so...
Well, they're not even saying that they can reinstate it.
Correct me if I'm wrong. You're, you're looking to make sure that your permit, you wanna go by a different building code when you started this project? Plus, is that, is that what I'm saying? You wanted to...
No.
What, what building code are you trying to make sure?
2013 building code is what I submitted under.
That's the one I'm saying, okay? So here we are at 2019.
Yeah.
Okay?
I understand that.
And you haven't paid your fees either, okay? Is that correct?
No, I did. I paid my fees in 2013, uh, when I submitted my application. And then I was, uh, also sent an additional bill quite some time after they're even saying that I was expired from engineering, of which unfortunately, I don't have that right now. It's Tower Properties got it. But I'm sure that the, uh, building department has a copy of that. I believe it was $844 for some kinda engineering that I called about and said...
Was that ever paid?
Yes.
Okay. I see these numbers that were here somewhere.
Yes, I paid that.
And I was just wondering, there was money that changed hands here.
And at that time, I was under the impression that we're still going forward, or I wouldn't have been paying it.
Right. So right now, the impasse is, a couple of impasses. Sound like you have a permit that's kind of dormant, whatever you wanna call it, abandoned. Uh, you don't wanna call it expired. Uh, then you're trying to maintain your building code. If you do reinstate it, that they're gonna go by the guidelines of 2013.
Yes.
And plus, okay, and I'm just trying to clarify here, 'cause I, I know you know what you're talking about, okay? But you have a soils engineer, and you had a difference of opinion on what type of foundation. Because of your experience, you felt like you could justify the use of the foundation on the city's website. And you haven't gotten anybody to agree with you so far.
Not in the staff, but the code does agree with me.
I got you. And I'm just kinda just laying it out so everybody can...
Yeah, basically, that's right, yes.
So we got a battle of, uh, of knowledge, or whoever, you know? I know you have working experience, but I just wanted to clarify here.
Something like that, yeah. Not exactly, but along those lines, yeah.
So if you were in those positions, how, how would you solve this problem yourself?
If I was in this position, how I would solve this problem myself is, I would, first of all, I would not, I would vote in favor that my permit is not abandoned, that I have not abandoned my application process, that I'm still in good faith, actively pursuing the approval of my project. I also understand that there have been other projects in this town that have been submitted under building, uh, year, um, I lost, I had senior moment.
I got you.
Um, that have been put on hold for several years and are still actively available. I'm not quite sure, but I believe maybe Burt Ranch, or I don't know, some of these other projects, where they've submitted some things, and then they've asked for extensions. And I believe that maybe even five years. And they're still like...
So, Mr. Halsey, you know, cost-wise, okay, let's just say, let's fast forward to today, okay? And you wanna build this project, and say they work with you to reinstate your permit, but they're not gonna go by the 2013, but maybe, and I'm just hypothetically saying, you do get a soils engineer to agree, or, you know, you'd have to find some sort of an engineer, or some sort, from what I'm hearing from the building official, to agree that that foundation would be compatible, so that you could bring it to building, and, but it would be to a, to a new standard, which would be the current building standard, and that won't work for you. Is that correct?
No, it won't, because it, it, first of all, you're not gonna get anybody to go outside of their profession and say, "Well, you don't really need me. You can just do this." It just doesn't work that way in this world, because it cuts them out of the picture, and they know it. The farthest that I was able to go with that was Rick Amaro, GSI Soils. I said, "Rick, Raphael's asking me for a letter stating whether or not this is applicable to my lot. Do I have an undisturbed lot? Do I have these EI index numbers?" And he said, "All right, Gary, I'll write you the letter." So I went and got it, and you guys have a copy of it. He stated on that letter that, and if you note that the footings design is specific for that, it's, it, there are limitations to that footing design. You can't just take that footing design and just do anything you want with it. It has to be a single-story building. It has to meet the load criteria for the soils, and it has to be an undisturbed lot. It's, it's like, you know, okay, so a developer comes along and develops a subdivision, and those lots are ready to build on. And then now you take that lot, and you add a bunch of years to it. Well, what happened? Did that lot become unbuildable for some reason? Did time make that lot unbuildable? No, it didn't. It's, it hasn't been dug on. It hasn't been disturbed. It's the same. Okay? It's the same.
Don, I got you. And, and just to fast forward here, okay? You said, so, let's say your application was deemed just dormant, and they deemed it, okay, we'll say Mr. Halsey's been working in good faith, now you're able to reinstate it, but it's not going to ensure...
No, it's not.
...your foundation, okay? You're still gonna have that impasse. And the thing about it here, you're, you're, you're kind of, um, saying that you want the 2013 guidelines. Now, if it was to today's code, have you done any homework to say what it would cost you additionally, to just bring it up to today's code? Has it changed?
Yeah, it has.
Substantially, to where it would cost you a substantial amount of money?
Yes, it has.
And that's why I'm asking, okay?
Yes, it has. It, it, it's changed Title 24 calculations. Now I have to go from an 80% efficiency heater to a heater, to a 95% efficiency heater, which changes a lot in the structure. I have to go from, uh, two-by-four walls to two-by-six walls now, which add a lot of cost to it, and it, it, it puts it in a position where me, as an owner-builder for myself, it just makes my job a lot harder. I mean, it's heavy now, you know? It's like, it's, it's...
I got you. And I guess, it looks like you've done a lot of homework during the way, okay?
I have.
I mean, I no doubt you, you, you're knowledgeable, and you're experienced at what you're doing. We're just trying to cut through the mustard here to see where the gap was, and see where you, you know, admittedly, you said, "Hey, there's a gap here." Uh, and you're hoping that we just deem it dormant, or, uh, that the application was dormant, and you were working in good faith. I think that's all I can gather out of this.
Yeah, well, yeah, pretty much. I was working on it with the understanding that it was ongoing, as one of the council members had asked last time, you know, um, I don't know, lost my train of thought.
I got you.
I believe it was Gilda that had asked, "Is there any way we can do that?" Yes, Gilda, there is. You reinstate my, uh, permit application, that, uh, under the, the fact that it, that I've been ongoing, in good faith, and been working with them. I believe that it may have been, um, Gilda also that, uh, mentioned the fact, or maybe it was you, Victor Vega, um, that, "Could this possibly have been something that slipped through the cracks, because there's been so many different building officials involved?" And I'd say, "Yeah, that's probably a lot to do with it, too," you know? And, and, and that's actually kinda have worked to my favor a little bit, because it's allowed me an opportunity to move forward on it, without just having somebody that just says, "No, that's it, period, end." Raphael was willing to, you know, consider that. I got the letter for him, but he just, he, ah, nah.
No, no, no. I, I, I hear your story, and I know you're not the only one with that story.
Yeah.
And we've had other businesses that have, you know, "Hey, we've, we've, we've gone through some building officials, okay? So..."
Sure, yes.
"...things could've fallen in between."
Yes.
So I wanted to clarify that I think, uh, your story seems to be valid. I just wanna go to the city attorney and, and, and ask if there's something that can be done. I don't think we can fix all your problems, or all your issues, okay?
Might not be able to.
I don't think so. I think possibly, it just looks like your foundation issue, that's gonna be a soils engineer issue. And the other part of it is, the permit and the building code, I mean, I, that's gonna be something else, okay? I mean, whether you gotta go by two-by, two-by-fours, or two-by-sixes, or 65, uh, or...
Yeah, yeah.
...to 95%, that might be something you just have to deal with, you know?
Yeah, yeah, you're right. But the other issue is the footings issue. That's the real big deal for me, is, um, you know, like I said, when I approached this, that was the whole reason that I did, because I'm like, "Okay, well, I can go build a couple whole reason that I did, because I'm like, "Okay, well, I can go build a couple duplexes and build them myself, and, you know, I've got the money to pay for it, so I didn't have to go into a bunch of whatever."
Got you.
Yeah, yeah, and, um, well...
I think my next question would be for the city attorney, you know, and so we can get a little bit of bag here, Mr. Halsey, is okay?
It's very possible, yes, just with the understanding, though, that, uh, you guys, uh, you know, can take in the issue of whether or not, you know, in your opinion that, you know, I'm, I've abandoned it, or I have not been ongoing active, you know, activity is, you know, what it says. I mean, you've got all the paperwork in front of you.
Yeah, like I said, my, my next question would be the city attorney unless somebody else has something here.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
I don't see any, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. City Attorney, I think the impasse would be here, uh, can we deem an application based on good faith, according to the paperwork he's provided for us, uh, through the state guidelines? Is there such, uh, a guideline that we can adhere to for someone that can, it looks like he's provided a lot of paperwork. It doesn't solve all the problems of foundation or building code, uh, but is it possible, or is there even an avenue to allow him to reinstate his permit, but to, whatever we need to do to keep us compliant and keep us, uh, legal?
Uh, I'm going to ask our building official to chime in, but the way that I read this, Section 105.3.2, is that the application expires after 180 days unless it's been pursued in good faith, and that the building official can grant one or more extensions of time for additional periods not exceeding 90 days, and the extension shall be requested in writing and justifiable cause demonstrated. Uh, I don't believe Mr. Halsey ever requested any extensions.
No.
And what we, uh, the way that we interpret this is that, uh, to have pursued your application means that you are responding to staff's plan check corrections and submitting additional, um, submissions to attempt to meet staff's corrections that they say need to be made to the application, and, uh, as I understand it, Mr. Halsey did not ever respond to the first set of plan check corrections. Uh, if building official has anything to add to that, I'm happy to receive it.
Madam Mayor, the, and council members, we do not have any documented resubmission of plans since the initial submittal that was made in August of 2016. Although, although a lot of conversations have occurred, the documents have not been revised and resubmitted to the city for processing, and that is the standard that the building department holds for active pursuit of the project.
So, um, he would have had to put something in writing to the building department indicating he wanted to keep this project alive and going, is that correct?
The proper response to a list of corrections is to revise the plans and resubmit them.
Okay, and again, I'd like to...
That would keep the permit active.
To reiterate, I appreciate the building side of this. We're just trying to find some way to see someone that's worked hard to see if there's a way of doing something, and obviously, everything's not in a perfect world, but, uh, do respect your opinion and the building department. We're just trying to see if we can help somebody get something built. Thank you.
Any further questions of staff or comments before I open it for public comment? Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, there's a couple of things here that, I'm not going to be a judge on this, and I'm certainly the wrong person to sit on a building appeal board, but I'm gathering that if there's activity on this, I interpret it that activity indicates that they're doing something. So, doing something would show good faith in the building aspect of it. I know the building inspector you're referring to, Mike, he was here a very short period of time. You've dealt with him, so that's got to have been within the last year, basically. You've dealt with Mr. Caneho, who was here. These have all been since that period of time. That indicates to me that you have had conversation and have continued to try and, whether it's a footing or a convinced building, that you have been active on it, something, but there is movement on your part, I guess. I, I, I'm almost to the point of just saying, "Could we have a timeline built on this and some kind of a referendum given to us?" Because for us to sit up here and make a decision to say yes or no, it, it's almost like everybody against somebody, and I'm not real sure here.
No, we absolutely can, as a city, create administrative procedures for how to deal with when, uh, applications expire, when a deadline is for someone to appeal to council. Uh, you could create a building code appeals board if you wanted to. That's actually what Sacramento County has done here, and that's what Mr. Halsey has given to you. Sacramento County's administrative rules about when permits and permit applications expire and when you can get renewals, and, uh, we, we can do that. We don't have it right now.
Yeah, I guess the whole thing is, is right now, it just seems like it's a lot easier for everybody to say no, and I'd sure like to say yes, but I just can't find a reason to say yes here either, as reluctant as I am to say no. Um, with the conver, there's a letter in this pack here from a Parnell Fuhr residential plans. It says, "I have spoken with Mr. Caneho," and blah, blah, blah. Well, this has put it within a year, 18. So, I'm just, I, I'm not sure what we're basing this. Just because, you know, the plans came in, there wasn't a plan check, or return on a plan check, doesn't mean that the project's dead. So if you finished the plan check and you say, "Okay, well, now financing is an issue," the project dies because nobody's going to loan you money in a recession? Does that kill it, and you have to go back and wait until 19 or 20 to resubmit it to their specs? I, I'm, I'm very confused with this one, Jeff. I think that we're going to need a bailout.
Councilmember Cordova.
So, I will add from personal experience that when we were building the Hilton Garden Inn, um, we came upon this particular type of scenario where if we didn't build it by a certain period of time, we were not going to be able to build to the 2016 code. And guess what? We got our heinies into city hall, and we did what we needed to do in order to keep our costs where they needed to be on that project, and as it was, the construction cost was already astronomical, so it would have been an additional. So, as much as we try to find an avenue, you cannot curb building code.
So, so unfortunately, no matter how active you have been, and you have been very active, and you yourself have been doing work in your own good faith, that exchange has not happened in a documented way, or a permit issued at any level to say that it's a permit extension. So this is an application extension. If you had at least put in writing, "I'm having X, Y, and Z occurring, please allow the application to extend while I work on this," my best guess is staff would have given you that, but because there was no written request to at least ask for those extenuating circumstances, it literally just expired. And I wish we could go back, but building code doesn't let us do that. As Councilmember Starbuck says, it's just an unfortunate sight of this. Well, unfortunately, I believe there is a warning when you begin the application process. You are told at the beginning of the application process, in the application, that you have these timelines that are required to be met. So whether you received a letter or not is not required by building code. You are notified at the beginning of the application process what these windows are. So that is on you from the beginning to pay attention to those, and yes, when there's extenuating circumstances, and you may miss a day or two within that 180 days, I'm sure we would find a reason, if it's 190, that you walked in and said, "I've been in the hospital for 10 days, and I missed my 180-day, can I get an extension?" And we would have done what we needed to, to get you that. So, I unfortunately cannot see a way out of denying you this and asking you to, again, come back in and start the process with the hopes that you can use this footing and everything that's been asked of, you now are prepared to provide, and it can move it forward. I, I don't want to turn you down. I see no avenue to help you. The good faith is a two-part. The good faith can't just be you, it has to be good faith, working with staff, and their documentation of that, and that, those, those things don't exist, and obviously didn't exist despite the turnover. I'm sure we would have hunted for it. Vida probably would have hunted for it while she was here, and unfortunately, it's, it's now...
You also have a letter by a government office.
I, I appreciate that, and, and, and we've moved past your responses. So we're trying to deliberate and explain to you, the denial wasn't meant as personal, and, and we're not trying to keep you from doing this. It is an unfortunate set of circumstances that our hands are tied by the state and the building code, and this time, my only ask of you is, if you choose to start this process and go through it, please stay on top of those timelines so that we can help you get this built through this process and not cause it to turn into the 2020 building code, 2019 building code that will come out in months. And that's our fear, is that this will drag out to the point where you even miss out on this opportunity and get the new code that's even more restrictive, and so...
Do you have to comment on the building laws, uh, plan, or...
I'm sorry, if you're going to ask a question, which is no longer the floor for asking the question, you'd need to return to the mic. So I, I would suggest that you bring that conversation back to staff at this point, because we've exhausted, uh, the city attorney.
On that very point there, I just want to reiterate that staff has a standing invitation to Mr. Halsey to come into city hall and have a meeting with us so that we can advise him and try to assist him as best we can.
Okay. So I'll bring it back to council, um, with sadly, again, the motion to deny your appeal because our hands are tied, and send you back to staff to start the process over with the hopes that this time we can stay on top of it with you and not let this fall through the cracks, and would look for a second on that. Oh, we have to do public comment, my apologies. Public comment is now open on this matter.
Good evening, councilmembers. John Lynn Lompok, President. I think you've kind of talked yourselves into a decision, so probably me talking to you isn't going to help a lot, but I feel compelled. So the current staff that's talking to you this evening has no knowledge of what's gone on in the past. So they're surmising what they think happened back then. I think it's pretty obviously that Mr. Halsey has been, in fact, in contact with the city on a continuous basis. He, uh, had his permit, in fact, expired back when staff said it did. Why did all these building officials keep talking to him about an expired permit without saying, "Hey, you know, your permit's expired. I really can't do anything for you"? Um, why, why wasn't he told? We can't prove we sent a letter. Maybe we intended to, maybe we didn't, in fact, send it. So your finding could be that Mr. Halsey has, in fact, worked in good faith, and that he never abandoned the project, and that he has worked continuously in good faith, and you could grant his appeal at least in some part. Um, just to draw a comparison, I know Dirk for sure, and probably Victor remembers the mini-market in the 500 block of I Street. Uh, I think that was completed last year, and it was begun in 2007, so that thing stayed open all that time. Now, I bet if we went back and looked, we wouldn't find that every 90 days a request was sent to have it extended. So in the past, and maybe that's not what we should have been doing, what we did was, we just worked with people bringing projects forward, and unfortunately, Mr. Halsey seems to have become the poster child for, "We're not working with you anymore." Perhaps what the council could do this evening is, they could say, "Well, you know, we can't grant your appeal, but we feel badly about how this has happened, and maybe we could waive your fee to reapply. Let's try to do something to help him," because the blame is probably equally shared. He thought he was going forward and doing all the right things, and no one ever said, "You've been expired," so thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing no other public comments, we'll, we'll turn to the discussion. Um, Councilmember Cordova?
I was just going to say that I think, uh, Councilmember Vega spent like 30 minutes talking to the appellant about, you know, if we did this hypothetically, could this work? And he stated no. Um, so I don't think that the council is against working with him at all. Um, I, I, I think the last comment is a good comment, that in good faith, showing, you know, waiving his fee for reapplying, I would be open to that.
What is the legal parameter for doing something along those lines?
Uh, waiving that fee is not on the agenda tonight, but if the council wanted to request that it be brought back for future agenda, then we can do that.
Okay. So I motioned for a denial. I hear that if we do the denial and he reapplies, one of the council members has asked for a wave of fees, which would need to be brought back. I need further input before I make an adjustment.
I would be willing to give a second on that, as long as there's clarity within, and the parameters from the city attorney, that that's doable, and we can re-agendize and bring it back?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
So I will adjust my motion for that. Councilmember Starbuck?
Now, when this comes back, Jeff, this would be open for a little bit of discussion also at that time, not only just the waiver of the fee, but we could look at some of these others on the timeline.
If the council wants to include that, these administrative procedures in that agenda item, uh, then yes, we can bring back that agenda item, too.
I think it would be helpful for us at that time.
To review exactly what?
Well, like I say, there's been several items brought up here in time. I do not have the original appeal, some of the paperwork in front of me with soils report, et cetera, et cetera, but some of the dates on that might be interesting to look at.
I would be wary to look at all of that without an actual application begun, to know what current issues are going to be impacted by the new application, because no matter what we're saying, is he has to now fall at least under the current 2016 building code, which will have additional changes, and by going ahead and having the discussion at the same time we're potentially waiving fees, is making judgment on things that the planning department hasn't actually, I mean, the building department hasn't actually looked at yet. So I would rather allow the fees to be waived, go through the process and get the feedback, and if he's having issues and gets denied at that point, then we'll know, but right now, we don't know if he'll be denied based on 2013 versus 2016 building code. So, so making a judgment on that already seems both a waste of our time and potential...
I'm just saying that discussion, we shouldn't shut it off, you know, our discussion on this.
I, I may have misunderstood Councilmember Starbuck's request. I thought Councilmember Starbuck was talking about bringing back legislation to adopt procedures about how these appeals work. I didn't think that he was proposing to talk about the details of one particular building permit application. So I, it, it would not be appropriate to talk about the details of a building permit application, uh, that we don't even have on file, uh, or even if we did have it on file, it wouldn't be appropriate to talk about the details of a building permit application unless it was appealed to council.
Understand. I'll go ahead and, and go back to, I think that our, uh, conversation concerning, uh, boards and appeal boards for, you know, building and all that should be totally separate from this, absolutely, but the fee waiver, I, I'll go ahead and go with that.
Okay, so as I understand it, the motion's to deny the appeal, but also bring back a council agenda item for waiving his reaplication fees?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none? Oh, do we have a second? I think we did, didn't, yeah, yeah. We're going to go with that. It's getting late, and we're going to need a motion to extend the meeting potentially. So, motion, second, discussion. Anything else? Okay, let's vote. And that passes for 0-1. Next item on the list is public hearing on issuance of a tax-exempt bond for the Arbor Square Apartments, adoption of resolution number 627819, subordination of regulatory agreements to tax-exempt bonds. Councilmember Mosby is still recused from this item due to proximity, and we are at 10:37. So I would ask for a half-hour extension, um, just to make sure we've allotted ourselves not, not...
I'll second.
All right, so, um, a motion and a second for a half-hour extension. Um, any other questions or concerns on that? Seeing none, can we vote from that? And that passes for 0. Thank you. All right.
Mayor and council, thank you so much for that extension. We have, um, guests here from up north and way down south waiting to also hear this hearing. Um, good evening, Honorable Mayor, council, and city staff members of our community that are still here. Thank you. My name is Chanelle Ovaya. I'm the city's community development program manager. Tonight, I'm seeking council's approval of the adoption of the resolution of approving the issuance of the tax-exempt bonds for Arbor Square Apartments, and the subordination of the city's Lompok regulatory agreement to the tax exempt bonds if approved. LIH, Arbor Square LP, the borrower, has requested an amount not to exceed $38 million in tax-exempt bonds from the California State Community Development Authority, AKA CSCDA, in order to finance and substantially rehabilitate the property known as Arbor Square. However, under the terms of the CSCDA agreement, financing can only be approved after, one, a public hearing, which we are having now, and, two, with the city's, um, approval, since the property is located in our jurisdiction, and, three, um, subordination of the city's regulatory agreement on the property to the bonds. The fiscal impact to the city and the benefit... The fiscal impact to the city and the benefit of approval, it's, it is important for the city council to know that this property currently has a regulatory agreement with the city of Lompoke to remain affordable rental housing for a period of 30 years. Approval of this request will allow for much-needed improvements to the property. Please know that the adoption of this resolution is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, known as the TEFR. The city in no way will be responsible for repaying the bonds. There are no fiscal impacts to the city. The city will bear no liability with respect to the issuance of the bonds. And further, the city is not any part, is not a party to any of the financial documents related to the bond's issuance, nor is it named in any of the loan disclosures of the proposed financing. The approval of the request and the subordination of the city's regulatory agreement will not change the terms of the agreement. The city will continue to monitor this property annually per the agreement, and the annual mitigation fees, which are current, will continue to be due and received by the city. Recommendations and conclusion. Tonight, we are holding a public hearing for approval of the issuance of the tax-exempt bonds not to exceed $38 million. This TEFR hearing was noticed in the Lompoke Record on September 4th, 2019, for public comment at tonight's council meeting. Staff recommends the adoption of the resolution, that we receive the public testimony, and we approve the subordination, or that council gives alternate direction. I would also like for council to know that John Pincowar with the California Statewide Community Development Authority and Kim Baraha, the project manager, are also here tonight and available for any questions. Thank you for this time. I am available for questions.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Chanelle, thank you. What will this, is there a covenant, obviously, on this for 30 years? With the issuance of this or approval, does that extend the covenant?
There will be an additional covenant of 55 years from when the financing is approved.
Is there any type of a pilot program with this, or...
This is something that the state has, it's something that, it's not like a new program. It's something that they have been doing and that our council has approved before for properties such as this.
Right. I guess the question is, we're doing the monitoring on it, but are we receiving anything on it?
Yes, we are. We are receiving about $19,000 a year as mitigation fees. Depending on our housing, it depends on like the sales of our houses.
Ms. Christie, can you please help me?
The mitigation fee is based on the increase to area median income. On an annual basis, we calculate that on how much it has increased since the prior year or decreased. So, it's $18,000 plus or minus an increase to the area median income at the same ratio or percentage. And in regards to monitoring, Arbor Square is a little different than our other monitorings because we, as the city, do not have in our regulatory agreement the requirement, it's only for the mitigation fee. So, we do not look at the units themselves. We only receive the rental report or the occupancy report, which shows us that the units are being rented to the income levels that have been set forth in the regulatory agreements. But this one, luckily, because there are so many units, whether luckily or unluckily, we don't have to go into 25% of the units and do the labor-intensive housing quality standards like we do with a lot of our other projects.
And so, this will stay in effect if this is approved? This is...
It's already in effect.
Right. So, the big scheme here is, all they're trying to do is issue these bonds to go in and do, rehab the place.
Yes.
Councilmember Vega.
Chanelle, is this a tax-exempt project?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Now, the difference here between the other projects is, the county owns the other projects. Is that correct? Or some sort of housing authority, but this is privately owned, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, once the indebtedness is there, okay, they've gotten in debt here, it sounds like it's probably going to keep them from selling that property again, okay, if it's ever, if it's an issue for the owners of this property, okay? I'm not sure what the gain is from this, from the owners of the property that came into here. Obviously, with the TEFR, there must be some benefit there for them to offer affordable Affordable rental housing, what is the benefit to the owners, okay? And I guess the other question would be, is the benefit to us, okay, when you subordinate on a project, and you, and I guess the clarification is, you're subordinate, subordinating on the regulatory agreement, but it's because you don't have really any strength in it because you don't have to inspect the interior of the units, because you're basically just, you're basically taking in paperwork, and I'm not trying to talk it down, okay? So, it's all a positive thing, but I want to, for clarity, you guys are getting paperwork saying that they're complying with their covenants, but you don't have to go inside the units, as if you were the housing authority.
Yes, the information Christie gave was correct, but we're subordinating, we don't have any, there's no financial obligation from the owners to the city. It's just the regulatory agreement for them to keep the property at affordable, at an affordable, as an affordable unit. So, that's why we are subordinating to the tax-exempt bonds, which is also noted in our regulatory agreement, that that is something that we would do if it were to come up.
I got you. And I guess my clarity is, you know, when you do it with a private owner, what's the difference between someone with a, that you have a covenant with, where you actually do the inspections?
I don't believe that there is a difference if we were to do it with the housing authority or a private owner.
So, the, I think it'd be good to clarify. You asked what the benefit was to a private entity to continue to renew or refinance their bonds or tax-exempt financing. This isn't unusual. This is something, this is something that many tax credit projects do on kind of like a five-to-seven-year basis. The property applicant is here, if you'd like a comment on why they do that. I think one of the, the other question you asked, it is kind of a two-part. For the housing authority-owned projects, so most of you know that we have a variety of affordable housing in Lompoke. So, we have, with the foreclosures that occurred with Lompoke Housing Assistance Corporation, Lompoke Housing and Community Development, we had a lot of properties with our city regulatory agreements for affordability that survived that foreclosure process. When those properties went to auction, we had private entities go to the auctions and purchase those properties. Because that regulatory agreement survived, they are now, yes, they got those properties probably very cheap, but they had restricted income because they cannot rent to people that earn above a certain income limit. They cannot charge more than a certain amount of rent. So, those, you get an annual report from us and a semi-annual report where we recap those units that we've gone in and inspected. We have a variety of funding sources that went into those properties many years ago that required 55-year covenants that survived the foreclosures. With those covenants, some of them were written that we were required to ensure that the units remained up to HQS standards, or, you know, habitability, housing quality standards. Some of them just said, "We need to make sure there's no trash." Some of them basically, so they were all written differently over the years. So, we really only do what the regulatory agreement requires us to do. So, I think we probably go out to about, out of 300 units, we probably inspect about 120. So, it's not all of them that require it, and not all of them are owned by the housing authority, and not all of them are private. It's just a nice blend nowadays. So, if that answers your question, I hope...
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for the clarity. And I guess I'd like to know the difference between the project that was, that went through, one time the council denied a project and they went to the state. It was over by Lompoke High School, okay, those apartments?
Yeah, so...
What's the difference between this and Arbor Square?
The biggest difference that I have to point out, this is existing affordable housing that has been off the rent rolls since, and I apologize that I can't remember, it's really late, like way past my bedtime, but like 2003 or 2001, this project came off of the property tax rolls. So, we haven't been getting property tax for this one forever, and it's been affordable housing since then. Woodstone, which is now The Vine, it was market rate units, and they, we opposed it, or council opposed it, because it took a couple hundred market rate apartment units and converted them to 100% affordable housing. You might recall that you voted against it as a council, and then they went to the state of California in Sacramento, went to Cal HFA, and Cal HFA approved it. So, it is affordable units, it's 100% affordable, and it is off your property tax rolls. So, that's the difference here. Arbor Square, there's, nothing is changing. Basically, approval of this is going to give them an influx of $38 million, and we'll see some improvements made there. That's, that's the intent of the refinance.
Yeah, I got you. And I remember the foreclosures from the LH CDC is what you're referring to, back in the day where people picked up apartments or units pretty, pretty cheap, and later on, they were sold to, some of the apartments were sold to low-income housing or affordable housing, however the covenant. So, I'm just trying to clarify because it's a little different, but at the same token, do you have a covenant or any regulatory agreement with the apartments that I just kind of asked about, or was that a separate thing?
Woodstone has no city regulatory agreement.
Okay, so it is a little different. That's why I wanted to just clarify and see what happened.
It's a 100% tax credit project, so it's through the state. They, they are the ones that oversee that project.
So, again, the benefit to the city is mostly, it's the benefit to the property owner so they can put in their upgrades and, right, is basically to make the property better?
That is the hope.
But the covenant, okay, that comes in and the financing, I guess what I'm, my question is, when somebody incurs debt like that, the liability to the city, I know you said there's no liability at all, okay? There's nothing there, right? Is that correct?
There's no funding in this project, so there's no city monies we would lose if this project foreclosed for some reason, and we lost our regulatory agreement, we'd lose the mitigation fee, but there'd be a chance it could go market rate if someone bought it at a market rate price, and you get property taxes again. So, I guess there's a scenario play out.
What's the mitigation, I mean, I know what that is. How much would that be? Do you have an estimate?
It's between 18 and 21,000 a year. I don't know what the max is we've ever received. It fluctuates. It's based on area median income.
But it doesn't go below 18.
Sure?
It will not go below.
That's what it says.
Gosh, it's getting late, guys. See, we're getting back to normal now. Bye. Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
Is there any regulation that, I guess, that guarantees that that money would be spent on improving that building or that facility, which would obviously impact the quality of life of the residents that live there?
The state tax credit allocation committee, or whomever they're receiving their financing from, is very much like any other lender. They want that money to go into the acquisition and go into the project. They do have a vested interest in ensuring that the project is maintained. Recently, the state went out and did, and they contacted us at the city back when we had our code enforcement officer, and they were working with him to address some deficiencies out there, which were all addressed, as far as we know. Unfortunately, with the change in staffing, we weren't able to follow up on it, but they wouldn't have been able to receive the financing without that being cleared up. So, they do provide some sense of oversight.
And is this, is this bond being requested or being sought because it's a refinance for building improvement, or is it a new ownership?
Good job.
Hi, good evening, almost morning. I'm Kimberly Borha. I'm with the developer who is going to do this project, and I want to address earlier, when you asked why somebody would do this, our group has been formed by a lot of people who work for CBRE Affordable Housing, so we have a passion for affordable housing. And one of the partners is a local, well, he was born and raised in Los Angeles, and he's second-generation real estate, and found affordable housing through his father's real estate business, which was commercial. So, there's a passion for doing it because of the people who inhabit affordable housing, because they are parts of our community, and they need safe, and they need updated housing. And in order to do so, you have to apply for tax credits and apply for bonds. This property was last rehabbed in 2003, which was, if you think about that, have you done upgrades in your home since 2003 for a 15-year period? So, the bonds are going to be applied for. Our lender goes through and gets all of the third-party reports to look at all of the deficiencies. You bring everything up to code, you bring everything up to energy and water efficiency. You also add ADA units, which is part of the scope of this plan, to be able to bring them up to a standard so that you're not discriminating against any class of person that could inhabit this property. So, 126 units, one unit for a staff manager onsite to ensure residents have somebody there after hours, 13 units, which will be ADA, keeping the exact same regulatory agreements, extending affordability, and allowing people in your community to stay there. The property is 60% occupied right now, which means there's 40 units that are not occupied because of the condition of the property, and we will bring that all up to code, so you'll have a property that's occupied 100% with over 300 people on a waiting list in your city alone. Not to extrapolate that, but nationwide, that's a huge problem. If you think about, there's 300 families here and people here who need properties that can be brought up to a livable standard. So, that's why we do this, and yes, we have to bring the, you know, $38 million, sounds like a lot, but when you have 126 units putting $50,000 into each unit to bring them up to standard, plus reduce the energy of use and waste, it's a really good reason to do a project.
Thank you. I really appreciate the feedback on that. That's great information. But just, again, my question, is this a new ownership, or is this an existing?
It's a new ownership. So, the property is actually owned by a lawyer in LA right now, and he partners with a nonprofit, and the nonprofit, we actually know very well, and so we're, the nonprofit is staying in, and we are coming in as a new owner, and so there's, part of that is keeping the consistency of the nonprofit. They know the property, they know how it operates, they know what needs to be done for the community and the building, and we are the new owner. So, it is an acquisition that we hope to close with your support.
Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to add, is there any improvements, maybe you're not on that part of it, but I'd like to say, you know, the community has public safety awareness here in Lompoke, okay, we have some things that need to be addressed, but I think along with the housing authority, it'd be nice if other projects that come in here and asking for financing would also subscribe to, when they're doing improvements and upgrades, video surveillance for the units. I'm not sure if we can put that kind of caveat on you, but I mean, I know that in that area, along with the upgrades, the improvements would not be long-lived without some sort of proactiveness toward public safety. Many of the housing authority units here would have cameras installed with a system that would allow the police department, if, if available, to have a live feed, and that's how they keep their units kind of, keep them from being redamaged, or any kind of vandalism or graffiti.
So, I'll caveat this by saying, we're not asking the city for any funding. All of the funding will not, none of the funding will be coming from your budget. So, when we look at the scope of every property we do, because we own properties from Hawaii all the way to Florida, is we take into consideration what the property needs. So, if there's cameras, whether it be security patrols or just drive-bys, we do include that. That is considered in all of the scope of work that we do. And once we get the approval, we have a huge scope of work right now that does address physical need, but adding security cameras does not add a cost that we could not add should we not have it in our budget and scope right now. I know we did a little bit of an adjustment with our current lender on what they can lend, given the uncertainty in the market and the treasuries going up and down. So, we have to look to see what our wiggle room is. Our biggest concern is making sure that tenants have a place to live that is not going to have a leaky roof, and we also want to make sure that they feel safe. And we also want to make sure that they feel safe and that there's services available for that. So yes, it would be something that we could include in property scopes.
Yeah, and I understand you're not getting the money from us, but I'd like you at least to note it, because I think the, as far as the public safety aspect of it, I think the call volume is pretty high in that area, in those units. So if you could, at least pass that on, okay?
Definitely, definitely.
So that we can address it, because I think we're looking at reducing call volume to certain areas unnecessarily, and I think that would help a lot. I think everyone that comes into Lompoc, I think should note it, and we should present that to any building development to assist our public safety.
It's a very easy ask. We had to do it in a couple of properties in Austin. And just to let you know, too, we did a property that not too long ago in Austin had a police standoff with a bunch of residents that we had, and that was probably in 2010, 2012. And that wasn't great, or not a lot, we were really, we had a hard time trying to find people come in, but we came in, we've started construction. And even the property management staff, who was very reluctant to come in, said because of the upgrades, because of the pride of community and where they lived, because of what we had done to the property, the, just a lot of the problems that were occurring on and around the property have kind of decreased because people want to be there. And so security is not, is not a big ask, and we definitely will take every consideration into making sure.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I'd like to, Captain Mariani's here. And Arbor Square, sir, I think I'm, if you don't mind, just reiterating for them to substantiate that there are calls out in that area, Joe, you know, if you don't mind, okay? That way she can take it back to her people to say, hey, the chief of police also said
126 units, and we get a ton of calls there. There's no mistake about that. It, it is cause for concern for us. We've had promises in the past by other management companies that they would comply. But as I've mentioned before, too, one of the things, some of the folks who run a successful operation, as you pointed out, councilmember Vega, have implemented security systems. They give us feed, and they train their personnel to also assist us when things happen. And if we remain vigilant, if we put those things in place, and we use otherceptive, which is crime prevention through environmental design, it serves to enhance the safety for that area. So it's, it's really critical that anyone who comes in there, you know, makes a commitment to do that, because that will greatly reduce the call volume and reduce the crime in that area.
Yeah, thank you, Captain. And I'd like to ask the council to also note that when we have projects here that's in with our scope and the planning commission, whereas a commercial development or something with multi-units, that we also address the video surveillance as part of the approval process for many times, just to reduce the crime in Lompoc. We don't need any more here, you know? So basically, I think that's within the scope of our authority to ask for these things and make our community better. It doesn't mean, I think it's just, I think it's something we need to do. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff before we open it to public comment? Seeing none, we will open the floor for public comment.
Steve Bridge, residents, you already have my yellow card. All of this sounded really good, but what kind of slid by, and I'm by no means an expert on this, was your covenant went from 30 to 55. So what I just heard is you're, without specifically doing it, essentially saying you're going to have that all be low-income housing for another 25 years. And it's not like Lompoc doesn't have a lot of low-income housing. So I, I just want to make sure we recognize that, all the, it's not our money and all of that, but it is our city. And, and you've just, I realize it'll still go through the proper planning and all that, but you're essentially approving another 25 years of low-income housing of another 120 units, so.
Nick Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc, is just going to reiterate the same thing, is that, yeah, by, on a re-acquisition and on a tax credit allocation, the covenants now are 55 years. And so I believe it starts as the new owner comes in and that financing is finalized. That being said, this property, as far as I can recollect, has been a low-income tax credit property, and it is in desperate need of major renovation. And so to, you're either going to have the property collapse, and we've witnessed what happens when that occurs, or you get an investor group that comes in and renovates the project out. I'm generally opposed, as I've spoken before in the past about increasing that, but in this case, that it's on the books and in desperate need, I think it would be a logical thing to do, is, is to allow the renewal of the tax credit through a new acquisition and a refunding and renovation.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. We are now within three minutes of our extended time to 11:08. No, you're going the full 11:30? Right, but, yeah, 11, at 10:38? Okay, your extension went all the way to 11? Awesome. Okay, I just added the half hour to the 10:38. Awesome, okay.
The meeting ends at 11?
All right.
The extension's 30 minutes.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you for that clarification. No problem. No, 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 I, I want to make sure not to violate the, we, we didn't make sure we could keep talking, because it's going to happen. Councilmember Cordova.
I was just going to say, I do appreciate the comments brought forth by our residents in regards to more or the extension of additional years of low-income housing, and I do understand the impact of that in our community. I have been vocal before about that issue within our community. However, I, I do think we don't, unfortunately, we can't decide who can own a property and who can't. Obviously, the people that, that purchase are the ones that are the, that have the entitlement to be able to do that. So at least by refurbishing the project, which we know has been historically a low-income housing, and bringing 40 units back into, could solve a little bit of a problem. I would hope, and I, and, and I would hope to see that the project really does get refurbished, and that serious consideration is given to what Chief of Police and Councilmember Victor Vega just stated in regards to safety and security and cameras.
Councilmember Vega.
Yes, thank you. Chanel, I guess, one more reiteration of the, and I should have done this when the lady was here, but, so, it's not our money, they can take the money and run. Is that correct? And resell the project right after and not do any rehab?
I believe they would still have to do, it, it would be, they're, they're would not be owing the city.
Sorry for the verbiage, but I had to ask.
They would not be owing the city of Lompoc any money.
I got that, I got that part, I got that part. But they're going to get a 300, what is it, 38 million?
30, up to 38 million for the, and who they're asking the funding from, part of that agency through the state, that's what they do, is make improvements.
So the rehab will happen, is all I'm saying.
Yes.
Is that correct?
I believe so.
You guarantee it?
If I can jump in real quick.
Yeah.
With the CSCDA, they'll, they'll have people, because they're, it's a bond issue, so they're going to have all kinds of covenants that they will have to follow. So they're going to be doing some, they will be doing work over there.
Okay, thank you. I see Christie's head nodding, I don't know why, but.
They're going to have a lot of state oversight, is what she's nodding about.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention one thing, is it appropriate?
Yes.
For me, okay. We had public comment where they were not wanting to, to extend the affordability covenant. It is already in place, and it would, yes, extend it probably another 25 years. But I think that our public does not understand low-income housing, and I believe there's a lot of stereotype to that. And it would be very nice for the public to know that people, most of our city employees here are low-income. This particular property is only, only has 10 units for very low income, and then the rest, the 115, are for low income. I am also, as a manager here at the city of Lompoc, I'm considered low-income. So if I needed a place to stay and this place was to be revamped and improved, this would be someplace that I would be able to afford as a city resident and a city employee. And I didn't know if, if the council knows what those income limits are, but I printed them out just in case, because I thought that this may be something that comes up.
Okay, thank you for that additional information. So I think we've asked questions of staff, we've had public comment, we understand that it's not impacting our budget in any way, and that this is already off the property tax as it is, and will vastly improve a property that needs this. And as a result, as we've seen with other properties, once they're improved, there is pride of ownership and an improvement in the neighborhood. So I'll go ahead and make the motion to take staff's recommendation for issuing the tax-exempt bonds for Arbor Square Apartments, adopting Resolution 627819 and subordination of the regulatory agreement to the tax-exempt bonds. Councilmember Cordova.
I will second that, and I just want to make a quick comment. My initial statement started with saying that I would love to see the improvements happen for the betterment of the quality of life of those residents. So there is no label that I put on any low-income people in our community. I think that they deserve a better quality of life.
Thank you. Any questions, clarifications to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes for 01. Thank you all, and Councilmember Mosby may return to the dais. If he's wearing pizza in any form, he will be attacked by the rest of council. Lob the sauce off.
Is there a slice left?
So any written communications?
Nothing more than you've already received.
Thank you. Oral communications on city matters for up to two minutes.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc, and I just want to make a statement in regard to the last statement was made on the last item. I do understand affordable housing. It's kind of an oxymoron in Lompoc because everything is affordable, because we share a median income with Santa Barbara County, which pushes income limits very high. So it's not that I'm in opposition of affordable housing. I am in opposition of what the overabundance of affordable housing is doing to the financial standing of the city. That being said, is that we can highly subsidize affordable housing, and they can then in turn take a Section 8 federal housing voucher and get full market rent. Because the tenants only obligated to pay 30% of their rent, and that 30% would meet the affordable housing. So, you know, it's, I'm, I'm not trying to put a valuation on it, but it does have some significant impacts to the bottom line. And we just saw the entire community come up and, and have issue with revenue sources. Well, that's a significant one, and we're getting more than our fair share of that in this community. And I think it's time that the council stop and reconsider that the long-term consequences, you heard 55 years is 55 years, no matter how you slice it. And, and so if you continue to take the largest properties that are paying the most tax base and remove them, you're going to have dire effects down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional oral communications? Seeing none, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council comments and meeting reports. Councilmember Vega.
I might just like to say and reiterate my comments for any new building and development. We have a couple of planning commissioners here, and I'd like for the city to notate that I think that it's imperative that we inspire our community to invest in cameras when they can, because something's going to happen. One, and it may not happen to them, but I think it's, it's really important, we're at this day and age where technology is, is affordable, and I think we need to notate it as a city, you know? Public safety, people need some assistance. When it's coming, the crime's going to happen, and they need some help to solve this. So having something on a digital video is going to be important to them expediting this. We've had too many things happen here in Lompoc, and I think it's time for us to be proactive and put the message out and not be silent any longer. And thank you, no more, nothing else to report.
Thank you.
Couple council requests. One is, it's come to my attention that we probably overstepped a little bit by introducing building code into our cannabis testing code with mandating that all testing facilities have sprinklers. Think we could bring it back relatively simply, we don't think we need to do that in the code. It's being prohibited, and people are trying to put in a testing facility. It's not quite what we thought it was, it's not open flames everywhere. And where they are needed, already fire and building code can take care of that, but I think we overstepped a little bit. Like that be able to come back. Hopefully, we could do it with a simple fix on, on that one. But I'd need two others to go along with that one.
I'll, I'll go along.
As long as staff reviews that and makes sure that it wasn't overreach, I'll give you your third.
Let's come back for discussion and possible fixing, fixing of it anyway, so.
Right, we're going to write a staff report on it with any.
The other thing I have is, I talked before about this with the city manager, I think two meetings ago, my public safety commissioner in getting items on agendas and understanding the public safety commission and being as a priority as it is, she's recently tried to get three items on, she tried to do it before, is having difficulty getting them on. And there's three items that she'd like to discuss to put on there, and I don't know if I, before I did, need to make, you said you guys would take care of it, but it seems to be getting a wall again and not able to get through. So do I need to make the request to get those three items up here so that she can get them on, or we can mandate them to be on for her? Because the meeting's going to come up, then only once a quarter?
Yeah, let me, I'm going to actually throw, throw it to Jeff.
The council has adopted a handbook for boards and committees and commissions, just like we have a handbook for council. And the boards and commissions and committees have to request agenda items, just like council requests agenda items. So the, the handbook for the boards, commissions and committees says that future agenda item requests shall be made at the end of the meeting, just like council does. So if the commissioner that you're talking about wants to request items, then she can request them at the end of the next meeting, and they can be brought back at a future, at a future meeting.
Okay, without getting a discussion of this, but that was, was kind of what was tried to happen, and it didn't get directed that way. So it's come back to me stating that, that you need to get permission from your council member. So I'm trying to get this, I mean, public safety is a component of interest and concern. And if there's three items that she'd like to bring on there, she actually wrote an email and was denied, told, well, you're going to have to do it at the next meeting. Well, the next meeting comes, and then it's 90 days after that. I mean, by then, what are we waiting for? I know there are ways to get things on, other people get things on agendas, they don't have to go through this lengthy process. I, I did bring the, my commissioner into you, she felt denied before, and she's feeling denied again. So I would just, can I overrule that and override that by getting a council request here to put them on the agenda?
Well, the council can't take action on something that's not on our agenda, but you did come to me, you talked to me about this. I talked to the staff members in question, and maybe there was a misunderstanding at the last public safety commission meeting. If, if there was or if there wasn't, it's clear now that if a request is made by a commissioner at the end of the next meeting for future agenda items, they will be brought back. Of course, you're right, it doesn't, commissioner doesn't have to make the request for something to be put on the agenda. Staff can put something on the agenda on their own volition, just by staff's choice. That could happen in this instance, but it would deny the rest of the commission the ability deny the rest of the commission the ability to have input on whether they wanted to talk about that. Maybe if there's only one commissioner that wants to talk about these things, then he or she wouldn't get three votes to bring it back to another agenda. So the proper procedure under our handbook is to have it be requested at the end of the next meeting, for the next meeting. And yes, it's unfortunate that they meet only once every quarter. But that's the rule. If staff wanted to, staff could put an item on the agenda on their own volition. Those are the rules.
And, okay, without getting the lengthy discussion, I'm just puzzled to the component, because my commissioner's been denied the ability to get to that level. And so maybe I need to take, bring it back at the next council meeting, maybe need to bring the whole handbook back regards to the public safety commission, so we can change it, modify it, so I don't have to have these. I mean, it's a critical concern right now of what's going on in the public safety, and the items that, that commissioner wishes to speak about are very, very important for this city. And the three items that she'd like to get on are not expenses, but she was directed in saying, you got to get permission from your councilman to put these on. So I'll fix it, I guess, next time.
So regarding those requests, you know, the, the handbook spells out the, the requirements compliant with the Brown Act. And we had former city attorney Joe Penoni gave instruction to all of the commission members over a year ago, and I was present. And in it, he went step by step, how you put something on the agenda. There's a process in place. Commissioners have asked me in the past, hey, I need to understand my role. I encourage them to read that commission manual. And so there's a process in place, and that's what we want to do, is adhere to those rules. And granted, those, those issues that they may have are important, but the process has gone over, has been gone over at least three times. So it's not that anybody's trying to stall or prevent it, but we want to be compliant. And if the council elects to change that, then that, that would be for the council to decide on that. But I want to make it clear that there hasn't been an opposition to that. What we're asking is that we comply, all of us have to comply with those rules. Because if we allow something to take place, and that's a public meeting that's recorded, and we find ourselves in violation, then we're responsible as well.
Nobody was asking for a violation of the Brown Act, and that wasn't where we were going with the requests. I've chaired meetings before, and if somebody's going a direction, you can redirect it down a certain avenue, and make sure it doesn't get into that. Anyhow, so, one other thing I was going to ask, going through my archives, I came across the Lompoc Police Department two thousand annual report. It's got a lot of interesting data in there and such. I don't know if we have something similar like this, that's more recent that can come out, but you guys more and well look at it. And some of the interesting items that they came across here, finding out how much we used to get in grant funding. Nearly twenty percent of our public safety of police department was funded through grant components. And a lot of interesting data in here and such. It's a pretty nice little book that got out there, goes back, gives a little history in a short timeframe of what's going on or not going on. I'd like to see if we could find something like that, similar, because that'd be quite as pretty as this one. The other thing is, I attended the SB CAG subregional meeting, representing the City of Lompoc. Probably, big key point of interest was that there is a new definition and location of, in the environmental justice component with respect to transportation. I gave some of the staff a copy of one of the items, but have the pamphlet here, the folder here, if anybody wants to take a look at it. That's it.
Councilmember Cordova. I don't have anything. Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Thank you. I attended the CAC meeting, and the grant has moved forward, and we're waiting to hear back if CAC has rewarded the gang task force money, so we'll keep our fingers crossed that. I represented the city on the LUSD leadership panel, trying to build relationships with the school district. I represented the city for the World War One Eagle that was added to the memorial next to Stone Pine Hall. And I thank both the museum and the Daughters of the American Republic for doing all of that fundraising. It looks amazing. Thank you. The nine eleven memorial that was held on the morning of nine eleven was very well done, and I thank the fire department for organizing that. The first responders luncheon at St. Mary's, I want to thank St. Mary's for doing that. They did an amazing job and made sure there was enough to-go boxes for everybody to bring it back to those still on duty and didn't get a chance to go to that. And then, I just want to remind the public that there will be the Walk for Peace and Unity, remembering Marlin and the others that we lost for violence this year. It will be Friday, seven P.M., and it will begin over by Ocean Inn A by Starbuck Lind, and end here at the plaza outside of City Hall for a short program, and I invite the entire public to join us. Thank you all for being here and staying so late. We really appreciate the audience that did stay. We'll adjourn this meeting to the next Lompoc City Council meeting of six thirty P.M. on October first, 2019.